Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Malibu Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Monday, August 19th, 2019. Kathleen, could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Here.
Chair Euring.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Very good, thank you all. Lloyd, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would.
Put your right hand to your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, indivisible, public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice and rule.
Thank you very much. Can we get an approval of the agenda, please?
Yes. I move the agenda be approved as staff recommends with item 5A moved to a date uncertain.
All in favor?
Second.
No, pull them later.
A second?
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Kathleen, report on posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 9th, 2019.
Thank you very much. Richard, you're going to talk to us about the fire rebuilds, if you would, please.
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Commission. I'll give you a quick update at where we are as of this afternoon. We've approved a total so far of 47 applications that are like-for-like rebuilds and 61 percent and another 61 applications for like-for-like plus 10%. And so far, 11 of them are applications that are major changes to the residents. So this would be something where it would could be a coastal development permit or it just takes you out of that rebuild category. We have 11 projects under review related to the fire and 119 so far have been approved And also, we've been implementing the fee waiver program as adopted by the City Council. So to date, we've waived a total of $290,000 worth of fees. And these are fees that are for both the Planning Department as well as fees from the other city departments. So this would include building plan check, the reviews by the city geologist, city public works department, city biologist. And once again, the fee waivers apply to projects that are either a like-for-like replacement or like-for-like plus 10%. Once you go beyond that to coastal development permit or if the property changes hands and you're not the owner at the time of the fire who was occupying the residence, those types of projects do not qualify for a waiver. And I mentioned this, I believe, at the last meeting, but just to give it a further update for folks who may not have heard it, the Water Department has their own fees associated with redevelopment and they now have a fee waiver program as well. That's not implemented through the city. You need to speak with the Water District about that and we have the contact there on the screen, Dave Riedman. Or folks can also give us a call at our Fire Rebuild Table and we will help get them in contact with the Water Works Department for those fees. But we've had folks come to City Hall thinking that we had information on that or that we implemented the program. Beyond the knowledge that they're doing that, we don't know much more or able or able to waive those fees. And once again, we'd like to remind everyone that we do have someone at our Fire Rebuild counter who can meet with you during regular business hours. So from 7:30 to 5:30, there is a planner up there, even during the staff's lunchtime. So there's someone there. We can, if you have your materials, talk to you right then and there or set up a meeting to go over what is needed to submit for a rebuild application. A total of 14 building permits have been issued for reconstruction of homes that were lost during the fire. As of now, none of those homes have been completed. I would say that permits have been issued now for about the last month and a half or so is when they started happening. This is one of the first homes to go up. This is from the Malibu West neighborhood. So the framing's going up. These photos are about two weeks old. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Commissioners? Yeah, I know you don't know much about the Water Works, but I knew some people, some people asked me about a fee that they were charged $5,000 or $6,000 to hook up to the main that they had already been on already. Is that in the nature of the sort of fee that's being waived by Water Works?
Yes, it is. And what it may be related to, because that sounds about right, is that there may have been some equipment upgrades that took place in the past that they had not paid for and my understanding from the Water Department was that the plan they were going with was that as houses were being rebuilt or without the fire, in general, what they were doing was that if someone remodeled their home or built a new home, rebuilt it, that at that time, they would ask for the upgrade fees. And so those are the fees, yes, they're waiving.
You didn't mention the school fee. Is the school fee charged if you make your house bigger?
That I would have to look into for you. The two fees that I know that are not waived have to do with, it's their state fees and they have to do with seismic and structural fees. Those are fees that go into education programs for the city, for the state as a whole. Those fees are very small, but I know we are not waiving those because they're collected by the state. I can find out for you about the school, but I don't believe it applies, but we can verify.
Okay, and also, if you apply and then you sell your lot, do you get, do you have to refund the fees or do the fees that you haven't paid yet, are those not refunded? What happens if you sell your lot in the middle of this process?
We're not tracking, at this time at least, not tracking property sales after, through the permitting process in terms of the refunds.
But you would, you would track and see if it'd been sold since the fire?
Yes.
Right.
In order to apply for the refund, someone has to demonstrate that they were the primary resident at the home at the time of the fire.
Commissioner Marks, anything?
Yeah, just, can you bring up, I think it was slide two or three where you had the summary, a little more, just one more up, that one. So when we're looking at either that like-for-like plus 10 or major change to residents, are all those numbers related to those that were entitled to kind of the benefits that were stated as Woolsey fire victims or does that include also owners who have bought subsequently? If that makes sense?
Yeah, I believe I understand your question. The fire rebuild exemption runs with the land. It doesn't run with the owner. So if someone were to have sold their home, they could still, the new owners could put back the old home and that would be in these numbers. That answers your question.
And then, so the new owner, they'd be able to build to the base plus 10% basically as though they had been the victim of the Woolsey fire or would they be coming as a brand-new applicant?
No, they would be able to do, they would be able to take advantage of the fire rebuild in terms of the relaxing of rules to say, put back the 35-foot home if that's what they had or if the home was above the square footage. Once it runs with the structure of the land. But the fee waivers, those are limited specifically to the owner at the time of the fire.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Jennings, any questions? Just two, Richard. There are 119, the next slide, I think, is 119 homes you guys have approved and there's 14 that have gone through to a permit. So I'm front and loading it over here. What's slowing it down on the other side? Do you know?
So the 119 number is made up of single-family residences, lost guest houses, it's just structures in general. But there is a slowdown because if you do look at the number of homes we've approved, it's a lot more than, I forget what the next number is, I think 14. It's, what we're finding, our folks seem to have concerns that they may not get back what they had because, as I mentioned in previous presentations, sometimes it's not as simple as just looking at an old approval, an old building permit or tax assessor records. We kind of have to compile everything and aerial photos and figure out what they had. And so a lot of what we're seeing, our folks want us to verify their square footage first and then they spend the money and time to hire the structural engineer. And it's that engineering portion of the project that's slowing things down.
So you say they go through you first and they got to go back and do more work before they can go through the rest of the process? Is that what you just said?
Yes, in general, most people are coming to us with simply elevations and a basic floor plan, but no details, which isn't something we would ask for anyway.
I'm just wondering, I mean, and have you seen, I spoke to an architect this weekend who said he has seen a slowdown in the number of calls he's getting from people who are fire victims. Have you seen that? Is that in terms of submittals coming in or?
There was a drop at the end of July into the beginning of August, but last week it picked up for us again, but we did have a slowdown of applications.
Last one was, we had talked last meeting about the people who are doing the, need a permit, you know, not the ones with the like-for-like or the 10%, the major changes. What size of houses are they building? We had asked if we could just get some idea of, of are they maxing out TDSF or what, I mean, what are they doing to those properties? And if you don't have the answer this week, you get it next time.
I, just speaking generally, a lot of it is, there are folks who, the major change is sometimes just height because the, if they had, say, a 10-foot-high home, they now would like to have an 18-foot-high home with a vaulted ceiling or a larger attic space and so we're seeing that. But we did receive at least one coastal development permit application where they are asking for now a home and a guest house. They didn't have one previously and that does put them towards the higher end of their square footage.
If you just sort of keep a track of that and let us know because that was one of the concerns about these rebuilds and it'll just give us a perspective of what's going on. So if you could do that, that'd be very helpful. Anybody else? Thank you very much, Richard. Oral and written communication from the public for items that are not on our agenda. Do we have any speaker slips?
There may be a gentleman who has yet to turn in his speaker slip that expressed, no?
Would anybody like to speak on any topics that are not on the agenda? All right, very good. There's one, there you go. You're going to have to fill out a speaker slip when you're done, sir, and give it to the young lady over here.
I have done so.
Okay, very good.
My name is Dick Perrin. I'm the owner of the case, I think it's 5D on the agenda. It's a repeat, a repeat consideration.
This is a period to talk about things and we're going to come up with, that's going to come up as part of the meeting. So if, these are, this is a discussion of things that are not on this week's agenda. So if you want to come back and talk about that piece of property, we're going to cover that. It's not.
Well, I just wanted to, I wanted to request that it might be considered earlier, but if that's not appropriate.
We got a lot of stuff on tonight. That's going to be a busy meeting. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll close that piece up, bring it back up to the Commission. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Hill? Commissioner, Vice Chair Jennings, no? Commissioner Hill? No? Commissioner? No.
I just wanted to clarify, I did get a call during the week and I think, Richard, sorry to, Richard, and this might be more, you might want to give some input here, but the question, and I tried to phrase it the best I could, but the question I had was, there was a buyer who was looking to purchase one of the properties which had been destroyed by the Woolsey fire and can we just clarify for the public, Richard, what the city's position is on if someone does purchase a property from, from, you know, a burned property, what are their rights in terms of that same plus 10% and then what are their fee structures?
In terms of the structure, as I mentioned before, they're entitled to put back what was there. The council passed an ordinance that gives you two years from the date of the disaster to put back, to make an application to the Planning Department and then you have four years to obtain a permit to build that structure. So that helps you get through the plan check process. Extensions to either one of those timeframes can be approved, but it has to go through the Planning Commission and a, and a explanation to the Planning Commission that you believe meets due cause to allow you to give that extension. That information's on the city's website. And we did receive a call last week about fees and while we do want to see the city rebuilt as soon as possible and the waiver of fees is an encouragement of that, the City Council was very specific that the fee waivers be limited to only those who owned and occupied the home prior to the fire. So they would have to pay the fees as if it was a regular project.
Excellent, thanks for clarifying.
Just one comment. Went to the farmer's market again, traffic or parking was limited. I spoke to a couple of folks who were parking over in the Whole Foods lot and walking over. Now, I can't believe Steve Throwrough is allowing that to happen, but something to think about if you don't have a parking space, maybe someplace you can go, but be careful because that just doesn't sound like Steve. Bonnie, to you.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to make two quick announcements. First, on Wednesday, day after tomorrow, August 21st at 4:00 PM, the City Council is holding a special meeting on a temporary skate park proposal. So anyone interested in the skate park project, I highly recommend you attend. There is a staff report posted on the city's web, website. And then also wanted to mention that at the City Council's regular meeting next Monday on the 26th, there are three planning-related items. One is the City Council's consideration of the primary view determination ordinance that the Planning Commission considered several weeks ago that would put a hold on people trying to have a primary view established over an area that was burned by the Woolsey fire. And then the other two items are local coastal program amendments, one related to implementation of the housing element that was approved several years ago and the other is an update to the LCT, LCP Public Access Map. So that's all coming up on next Monday and that's all I have.
Bonnie, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything?
Yes.
Kathleen, have you got anybody down there? Any slips? None?
I'd like to pull number two.
You want to beat?
3B2, yeah.
3B2? So can we get an approval of consent calendar with item 3B1?
I move 3B1.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving along. We need a staff report? Oh, 3B2 is the extension of coastal development permit number 13013, variance number 14006, neighborhood standards review 14003, and site plan review number 13005. A request to extend Planning Commission's approval of an application for the construction of a new single-family residence and associated development at 5920 Basilio Canyon Drive.
Did, Commissioner Hill, were you interested in a staff report or did you have particular questions?
I don't necessarily need a staff report. I was looking at this thinking that maybe I was seeing a case for due diligence happening here, but then I looked at the dates and the permit expired on June 20th, but the request for extension didn't come in until August 8th. Notwithstanding what the staff report says, the request itself has a different date on it than the staff report says. So they asked for the permit too late.
Okay.
I think we cleared that up.
Adrian, you wanted, yeah, you sent out an email this afternoon that addressed that issue and.
I didn't see that.
Correct. Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Planning Commission.
I read everything Adrian sends out. Go ahead, sorry.
So there was just one email and it was sent to Chair Euring and not the rest of the Commission. The, at the time, the question was the difference in the dates between the date in the request of the letter and the actual expiration of the approval. And there's a good explanation for that. The, prior to the expiration of the project, the applicant did come in and submit the application, pay the fees and submitted a letter. Staff requested that they update their letter because they had mentioned a few other reasons why they needed the time extension and so we wanted that to be in their letter. So we asked them to update, update the letter, which they did. Unfortunately, that letter came in the day the report was published, so we didn't get a chance actually to update. The staff report indicated that this letter is updated. However, it just includes more information, but there was a letter that was submitted prior to the expiration.
Is there any reason that we didn't get the original letter?
No particular reason, other than the updated letter includes everything that was in that original letter and more.
And let me just, and Adrian missed, I probably should have sent it to everybody. I didn't realize it only went to me, but I did see the letter, it was submitted in May, so, but.
I will make sure in the future that we, that the timeline's clear because I know this is a concern, it's a concern for us also, but that we make sure that you have evidence that the request came in.
Yeah, when you looked at the report, you just couldn't see, you know, it said May and I got a letter from August and you say it doesn't.
But we don't know what was in the letter.
Do we have a copy of the, the letter up here? We can make available to everyone?
Because we have to make a finding that it meets the standards.
I didn't bring it, I can get a copy of the letter.
Want to delay the vote until we get a copy?
Yes, move the item till it lasts.
We'll just move it to the end until we get a copy of the letter, if you could do that for us.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Where do you want to move this?
Move it to the end.
Is there a motion at a second?
I moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Let's move on, public hearing, item 4A. Conditional use permit number 18005, application to allow the operation of a new restaurant, Cafe de Amore, including onsite sale and consumption of alcohol continued from August 5th. Could we get a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Planning Commission. Okay, the presentation is loading now. It looks like there are some computer issues. I'll just get started. The project before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow a new restaurant with onsite beer and wine sales and authorization to the Planning Director to submit a letter of public convenience or necessity to the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage The proposed restaurant, which is called Cafe de Amore, is located in the park at Cross Creek Shopping Center and is subject to the Civic Center Northeast Pacific Plan. The specific plan requires a CUP for restaurants with onsite alcohol sales and consumption. The subject application is the first CUP application for alcohol sales in the, in the shopping center and if approved, would be one of two establishments with alcohol sales, the other being the Whole Foods Market, which is currently operating. As the ninth proposed location of the de Amores line of restaurants, the project is not considered a formula retail establishment. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of Civic Center Way and Cross Creek Road. Adjacent uses include a vacant, the vacant La Paz commercial site to the west, Malibu Hardware and Supply and other general commercial and office space to the east, Sycamore Farms to the north, which is an equestrian facility, and the Malibu Country Mart to the south. Further to the north is the Sarah Retreat Neighborhood and the Malibu Knolls Neighborhood. The average elevation of the neighborhood is about 200 feet higher than the subject site and as such is susceptible to noise from the commercial area below. The proposed restaurant would be located at the north end unit of Building 1, right here. In the eastern portion of the site, the subject restaurant includes 895 square feet of interior space with seating to accommodate 12 patrons and an 881-square-foot outdoor patio, showing gray here, with seating for 56. This is an aerial of the site, so the patio is shown here. The floor plan shows the service area, which is hatched and as well as the kitchen and other sort of non-accessible areas over here. Restrooms are here. This is the outdoor patio, that's 881 square feet. The service area of the restaurant is calculated using the 188-square-foot interior space and the 881 outdoor patio. The outdoor patio is part of the required open space, that was part of the specific plan area, and signage will be posted around the patio to clarify that it is a common use area and a condition of approval has been added to require this signage. This means that anyone can enter the patio to, to eat outside food or, or just to hang out and this is similar to the public access requirements at other restaurants in the city, including at the Malibu Country Mart. Also, per ABC regulation, signage inside the patio will state that no alcoholic beverages may be taken off-site. The total area of the 1,776 square feet include the entirety of the 895-square-foot interior plus the 881-square-foot patio. The service area is 1,069 square feet, which includes the, the indoor sort of dining area as well as the outdoor patio area. Parking spaces for the restaurant would be provided in the parking lot for the shopping center. The parking lot is designed to provide parking for all tenants and that includes the outdoor seating areas. That's pursuant to LIP requirements for a shopping center. The site does exceed the 217 parking space requirement by providing 220 spaces. That includes seven electric vehicle parking spaces as well as bicycle, golf cart and spaces and hitching post for equestrian use. So in order for the shopping center parking standards to balance out, there does need to be a combination of high-intensity uses that use more than average number parking combined with lower-intensity uses. And restaurants and outdoor seating areas are considered high-intensity uses. So for the subject site, a maximum of 4,000 square feet of restaurant space and 48 square, 4,800 square feet of outdoor seating would maintain a well-balanced mix of uses. So the 4,800 square feet of outdoor seating has already been constructed. The, the outdoor patio that's associated with this project is included in that 4,800 square feet. And if you include the proposed de Amores restaurant, then the, then the least restaurant square footage would be 3,154 square feet, which is less than the 4,000 square feet that was analyzed. So with that, there is still 846 square feet of restaurant state, space that would be allowed in the future. So the hours of operation are shown on, on this slide. Alcohol service would be from noon to 10:30 Monday through Friday and 10:30 to 10:30 PM Saturday and Sunday. The alcohol license is a type 41, which allows for on-sale beer and wine for a bona fide eating place. No live music or amplified music would be allowed and that goes for the entire site. These are photos of the, of the restaurant. You can see the patio area is here. This is a proposed takeout window. Takeout orders would only be for food. No one would be allowed to order alcohol and, and take it out at the window. And here's another perspective. The entrance to the restaurant would be right here. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 1951, approving the proposed CUP and that concludes my presentation. I am available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? We've got some speakers from the applicant team. You want to hear them first and then go to questions? All right, let's do that. So we've got, let me open up the public hearing. I've got three speakers, slips. Stephen, I'm going to, Osha, Oshan? I was close.
Chair, do we take disclosures?
Oh, disclosures. Any?
None.
I've eaten at the other de Amores.
I've eaten there, too.
We've got three speakers. There's Christine de Amore, Jordan de Amore. We've got 15 minutes. Your answer, go ahead.
Very good. My name is Steve Oshan. I am the designer and the architect for the tenant improvement for Cafe de Amore. Basically, I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any questions.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Is there any, anybody else? The other two speakers, want to say anything?
Thanks for being a customer. Especially now, we need you more than ever in our existing stores, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. And just so you know, I, I am already the operator of a restaurant that has beer and wine in Camarillo, so I'm pretty familiar with, and that's been going for 12 years, so I'm not a rookie at that.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, let me close the public hearing, bring it back up to the table. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Just a couple. Has any potential effect on traffic been studied on this or is that already assumed to be included in the overall shopping center study?
Commissioner Hill, that, that was analyzed with the overall shopping center when the original CDP was approved for the, for the shopping center.
And however that was done, could that have accounted for any of the potential uses that this could have been, but we didn't know what it was yet? Like, for example, is the traffic substantially different for an Italian restaurant versus, you know, some Whole Foods vegan place or family style or, you know, romantic couples or like, is, I don't know. Is there a range on restaurant traffic?
The traffic study did account for different styles of restaurants. I don't remember the particulars right now. I don't know if the applicant does, but they're, they did account for particular styles. They were anticipating having, you know, like a, a fast service place. This is a thing called a, this is a casual dining as opposed to like a white tablecloth kind of a situation. So yes.
So no surprises in that regard. Okay. And then my other question is, uh, noise study. If we have alcohol outdoor, that could get loud potentially. Is there, is that integrated in the overall market study too, or is that something we haven't thought of?
The, the EIR for the overall project, they consider the outdoor spaces and the playground and just the, the shopping center uses, the loading dock, for example, on the rear of the, um, of the market, I think was one of the big concerns and noise readings were taken from up above in the neighborhood as well as in, in different other areas around. So, um, yes, in general, the, all of the kind of uses and, and things at those shopping center were studied as part of the noise component.
So Commissioner Euring, as a resident of Malibu Knolls, you, you don't have any expectation of rowdiness or anything?
You know, if they drink enough, they'll fall asleep. But, uh, no, I think so far we've been, I've, I've spoken to the people in Sarah Retreat who are also concerned about noise and this, this is a bunch of people paying attention. So I don't think that's going to get out of control. Commissioner Mazza?
Are there any parking requirements for takeout windows since people use them? Because I do not remember a mention of takeout window when we did the, when, when the shopping center was discussed.
I don't remember if that was considered in the, in the traffic study specifically or not.
Well, I'm talking about the whole center parking study.
Right. I don't, I don't recall specifically if they considered a takeout window as part of the.
So it's not automatic. You, you get a takeout window.
I mean, I think it's, it's part of a lot of restaurants. Um, and then I think in a shopping center context, I don't, it, it's gonna probably just be people that are shopping there and decide to get takeout for, on their way home. But.
Okay. Now you see there's gonna be a sign saying the public can use patio. Is there a sign that says that you can't have alcohol without food on the patio? Which I believe was one of the things in your staff report.
The, the CUP is for, well, beer and wine sales at a, at a restaurant, but I, I don't.
The, the CUP condition deals with the overall operation of the restaurant. I don't know. It doesn't necessarily deal with each individual customer as far as having to have food every time somebody shows up. It's supposed to be a bona fide eating.
Type of the ABC permit. Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, it has to be maintained as a bona fide eating place.
So what would happen if they?
It would be regulated.
The outside area became a bar.
It'd be regulated by ABC. So if there was some reason that they weren't, um, serving food, that would run them afoul of the state and that would subject them, subject them to enforcement action from the state. But as long as they're serving food, it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. And I assume it's gonna be posted that you can't take the booze off property. Can't walk around the shopping center with a.
I don't know if there's a posting requirement for that. The city doesn't have one. I mean, if you want to include that as a condition of the CUP, you certainly could.
Most bars I've seen have it. Okay. Now, could you just briefly go over? We, this shopping center gets four thousand square feet of restaurants. And there's eight hundred and fifteen left. Is that right? Or seventeen or something like that? Did that include naked juice?
And the coffee shop.
And the coffee shop. Coffee shop serves food.
No, it, it doesn't include the coffee shop. I think it was determined that the coffee shop and the, and the juice bar are not defined as restaurants.
What are they defined as? Because we did, we did a service area for, we did a, uh, we did a count for naked juice.
I think it's called nectar. And the, the square footage calculation was under the formula retail requirements as opposed to restaurant or non-restaurant. So it wasn't, I mean, it's part of the overall grocery store operation, the same way they serve food in Whole Foods, but it's not, um, that's not counted as service area either.
They're a separate tenant, right? They don't sublet. They've got their own space.
They're, they're a separate tenant.
They're a separate.
Well, they're, I mean, they're, they're within the, yes, they're a separate entity that's inside of Whole Foods.
Okay. Um, now this is a question for Trevor. CUPs go forever with the spot, right?
It's with the land, correct.
Well, is the land the location or the whole shopping center?
Yeah, we're doing a CUP for the location because they already have, I think, a CUP that allows the overall restaurant on, in the, in the, the, the larger lot. We're talking about a CUP just for the specific tenant space.
The, the specific plan sets out which uses require a CUP and which ones don't. A restaurant just by itself doesn't require a CUP, but a restaurant that serves alcohol does according to the specific plan. So it would run with this tenant's base on this location.
Okay, so my next question has to do with expiration upon vacation. Because we ran into a situation with a ninety-nine percent collective where there was a prior liquor license. It was still in effect since the CUP was never vacated. So we had to go through a rigmarole, have a hearing and everything to vacate the CUP, even though they were only there for six months. So if de Amores goes out of business, you can, you, you have to have the exact same spot or you can't put another restaurant in there. So there should be a way to get rid of that CUP without us having to have a hearing and notices and all that kind of stuff. Very common in most cities with bars.
I'm confused what, what you're getting at here.
I'm getting at, if we give a CUP that goes on forever, the year thirty-five hundred, and de Amore decides to retire, then you have a spot and that, that particular shopping center can't put a restaurant in anywhere but that particular spot, that particular size.
They, they would be able to, you know, take petition to have the, the CUP moved to another location or to be removed.
The CUP could be amended.
Yeah.
Yeah, but my question is why have a whole hearing like we had to do for a wine bar that had been out of business for three years?
Staff cannot revoke a CUP by our, by my own authority. It requires the Planning Commission.
No, but they can be revoked by the owner's action by moving out and closing business. We have those in this town.
It sounds like they're saying because it runs with the land, you can't associate it with the tenant.
Yeah, we can't, we can't make that specific to the de Amore because if, if somebody at another restaurant comes in, you're allowing this restaurant use with that. We can't make that specific to a person.
I'm not saying the tenant. I'm saying the location. So.
Do you, are you asking that the CUP expire if they're gone for six months?
Yeah, because the landlord cannot rent another spot other than that particular spot for a restaurant.
They, no, that's not really true. The, the specific plan does not require a CUP for a restaurant that doesn't serve alcohol, for example. So if, um, a sandwich shop wanted to move in to another location, they could do that without a CUP. The specific plan allows for a certain amount of service restaurant square footage, like Lily mentioned, and, um, because that's what was, it's all related to what was studied in the EIR.
Okay, so now if somebody comes in and they have a type forty-seven license, the type forty-one license, new CUP?
It was a different license, yeah.
If it's a different location.
Well.
They would need amended. If they're using a different liquor license, they would need to amend it to get.
Oh, okay. I wasn't paying attention to what number you said.
That's why I'm wondering, why don't we expire, like most cities do, expire some CUPs?
There, there is language in the municipal code that states that, um, the conditional use permit shall be revoked if the Planning Commission finds that one or more following conditions exist. And one of those is the use for which the conditional use permit was granted has ceased or was suspended for at least six successive calendar months.
Okay, so we, we could add that.
That's, that's, yeah, that's already part of the.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a standard condition. It's our, it's in here already. Plus, it's in the municipal code.
Then why did we have to?
But we do have to hold a hearing in order to do that. We can't just expire the CUP.
Yeah, run up a hearing.
And could it be? Do we have to have a hearing when that happens? We're not gonna drag the guy back and make him go into business.
It, it would be the due process rights of the, the shopping center. That's who's holding the, the CUP. So they would need to come back.
Hearings are fun.
So do we have to do anything at all to make him get a new CUP if they change their business?
No, they would be able to operate a business consistent with the conditions you're approving here. If they want to change that, they need to come back to amend it.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Not yet. I got some questions.
Oh, go ahead.
So I'm just kind of looking at some more of the conditions, but before I go there, let me just check one thing. So I'm just trying to understand that the alcohol service with Whole Foods selling beer right, right down the way, could somebody just go by, you know, buy a six-pack, walk over, hang out and drink their six-pack right there in that same space? I mean, that, there's nothing limiting that, right? In terms of use?
I think they might have run into issues with the, the ABC board if they're.
Says it's public consumption or public use there, so.
That's public use for purposes of how our zoning code works in terms of how much open space you have to have on a commercial property, but it doesn't really speak to where you can drink alcohol. I don't, I don't know what.
We need some clear signage then, because I mean, otherwise, if, if people would go just buy the cheapest alcohol they can and then sit in a public area, drink, because, oh, they're all drinking here, I'll just drink with them, you know? I'm just a little concerned with that kind of loophole with alcohol being able to be purchased right, right across the way.
So how would you deal with that, Commissioner?
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be the same problem if you, if this restaurant, you know, the CUP didn't exist and somebody went into the Whole Foods and bought a six-pack and walked out and sat on a bench?
Yeah, the only difference is that there are others also drinking alcohol. So how, how do you know who's doing what? So since you've got kind of a congregation with fifty-six.
Yes, my point is that it doesn't really relate to this application.
No, it would because this is designated drinking service area. And this is the only place they can drink. They can't buy a glass of wine from de Amores and sit on a bench. They have to sit in that particular area. So could I ask Joe a question?
One, one second. Did, did you have something to add or?
Well, I was gonna say you could run into open container laws if you're gonna be taking liquor out and then drinking in an open, in an open area. And, you know, they would only be allowed to drink it here in consist, in compliance with the ABC license. How would you serve in a cup, in a bottle?
Uh, we're, we're only gonna do bottle.
And what would you do if?
There's no tap either.
The local rugby team came in and brought in a, a case.
A case of my, my, oh, brought their own in?
They went over to the market, got a case and sat down.
I have to do what the law, what the law states. If the law states that they can't bring their own alcohol, then they can't bring their own alcohol.
And your, your license says they can't bring their own alcohol?
Right. I, I have to, uh, they'd have to take the food to go. And if they leave my restaurant, they, they can't take the alcohol with them if it's on, if it's half drunk.
But can they buy unopened alcohol at the restaurant?
No, it's only for on-premises consumption.
Yeah, I mean, he's been running a restaurant for a long time. I mean.
Yeah, thirty-two years.
I've done yours. I've done the one back in Boston.
Oh, with my grandma?
Your grandma, right.
Yeah.
So, so let me ask you this.
You're a lifer. You're a lifer.
Lot of restaurants and bars I've been to, they have a, a line around the front or a patio or something and say you cannot take it out out of, out of that area.
Out of the, uh, uh, out of our outdoor patio. They can't, yeah, because we're gonna have the patio blocked off.
So we, we don't have a sign that says that required of you? Is that something that you need? See, there's a signage, signage, sign rolls in Malibu.
Three signs on the outside patio says you cannot take the alcohol beyond this point.
Okay, and is that in, is that in this application?
That's in the application and we called out on the, on my plans. It calls for three signs.
Well, let, let, just to clarify. So I, I would ask that, I would say if you're gonna have people take alcohol out on the patio, give them a cup, don't give them the bottle, because I, I don't know that you'd be able to tell who's got alcohol from where. If they've got bottles that match what's being sold at Whole Foods, your operations are gonna be tough to watch. You know, I, I just, you know, were, any thoughts on that or? So, so I go to.
Explain that again?
So you, you sell Corona. Whole Foods sells Corona. I buy Corona over at Whole Foods. I just walk over. It's a public area. I sit down, crack it open. Now, granted, it's against the law, but you wouldn't know if I'm your patron or if I walked over from Whole Foods unless you're really watching.
Maybe if they brought it in a backpack or something.
Something, yeah. I'm just thinking out loud.
That's a good question, actually.
Yeah, I mean, they're, he knows.
I don't know.
The process, it says, if there's a whole bunch of people sitting in front drinking beer that haven't come into the restaurant to buy anything, you know there's something wrong.
If you notice.
When I look at their, their tab and it, it's eight dollars and they got thirty dollars worth of alcohol, I.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking, would you, I mean, would it make sense to have something like a plastic cup for those that go outside? Just so, hey, you got your cup? Some form of a cup that's acceptable.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, John?
I mean, I think we're trying to micromanage this to a point.
But I, I'm just, it, they could open a big hole.
Well, you gotta remember, we're in a college town.
Yeah, and I've got Pepperdine right across from me and I, and I hear that Santa Monica Junior College is coming in. So we're gonna have to be on our toes.
Right.
Okay, then the other observation is condition fourteen of operations. It says that you'll have, uh, what? Small signs outside that say be kind to your neighbors. Basically, I would just ask that that condition reflect what your, uh, your operations are saying. I don't think the conditions, the resolution actually says that, that it calls out the specifics about the alcohol, no bringing alcohol in, no taking alcohol out.
Right.
I would ask that as a friendly amendment to this. Well, we haven't made a motion, but I would ask for that change to the resolution.
Yeah, you make an amendment.
Yeah.
Or make the motion. The other, okay.
Well, as long as it's, it's sealed, I mean, if someone goes shopping at Whole Foods and picks up a bottle of wine and they bring it into my restaurant with the rest of their shopping because they haven't gone to their car yet, I think they're okay, but they're not gonna break it open and drink it in my restaurant. They're gonna buy my alcohol.
Right, okay. As long as you can monitor that and then.
It's to my beha, it's, it's, it's to my behalf too also. I don't want them to bring.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to.
Hang on, I have a follow-up question. You just said the patio would be blocked off, but part of the condition here is that it's open access for anybody.
Oh, yeah. It'll, it'll show a, a, but I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's not the wall Trump wants to build, you know, it's.
And is there signage that suggests to the general public that they can come sit down there too?
You know, you know what's gonna happen there a lot. There's gonna be someone sitting out there to eat and then someone's gonna, everyone knows everyone in Malibu. Hey, John, you said, no, come on over, have a seat. That's gonna happen. You know, they're gonna take up my space.
Well, let me, let me mention to Lily and see if this is what's in there. Tradnoy poached on the public area for a number of years and then they got busted and they had to put up a sign saying the public is welcome to sit here at any time and not order food. Is that sign in this, in this, uh, resolution?
Yes, that's a condition of approval.
It says that they have to have that sign up there?
It, there's a, um, the condition states that signage needs to be placed on the site. I'm pulling it up.
What number is that?
Um, it's condition number twenty-seven. It's on page seven. It states the applicant shall post signage in a location that substantially conforms with the locations of the outdoor dining area entrances shown on the project floor plan that states that the outdoor patio is open to the public.
And food is not, and requirement is not to buy food?
Yeah, because condition twenty-eight says they can't put any sign about alcohol serving because they can't put any additional signage beyond what's specified above. So I, I'd wanna have that condition fourteen updated to.
What do you, one, condition fourteen?
So condition fourteen. So, condition fourteen in operations, so I move the staff recommendation with the modification to, uh, item number fourteen under operations to clarify, you can't bring alcohol in, you can't take alcohol out.
And you are allowed to eat, right?
Well, that's, that's already.
And you are allowed to bring your food in, too.
Well, yeah, yeah, that, that's another condi, that, that's already explicitly stated in what Lily just read.
What, does, does your license allow like a corkage for people to bring in outside alcohol?
Yes, I think I have a corkage.
So they would be able to get a bottle at Whole Foods, bring it there, pay the corkage.
You know, when, when the CDP for the shopping center was approved, it said public. And that's the same thing with the, with the coffee shop. It's just like, uh, the country mart. You can go in there, period. You don't have to pay corkage or do anything else.
And Trevor's just saying that if you, if you wanted to go and buy a bottle of wine at Whole Foods and his license allows for a corkage.
But it's gotta come in.
But if you wanted to buy a pizza at Whole Foods, you could walk in there and eat the pizza.
But not alcohol.
Yeah. Right, just not alcohol.
Yeah.
That sign has to be clear, just like it is at Tradnoy.
So.
That's what his motion, that.
That's my motion. So, item fourteen would reflect the alcohol rules, whereas twenty-seven reflects your concern about public area and then that's why I'm moving.
So you're looking to add a.
I'd like to add amendment to that and second.
My understanding is that you can't, someone from Whole Foods or someone out of their car can't bring an open bottle into my restaurant.
Right, they can bring food but not a bottle.
Right, yeah, because I.
Okay, and, and, and I'd like to second that with a, with another amendment. And that is that there is a five-year review by the planning department on the operation of the restaurant to be reported to the planning commission. And I'm gonna ask that on every single restaurant we, bar we ever do, so we never have a problem like Nobu.
Can anybody want to second that?
Well, he's gotta accept it.
I'll accept that, I'll accept it.
Okay, that's the motion.
So we got a motion that says we accept the staff report, we've got a amendment to the language dealing with, give me your language again.
So, on item fourteen, add, add language to the fact that no alcohol, out, alcohol purchased outside can be brought in without acknowledge by management? Are you, you want corkage?
USA in compliance with, uh.
ABC rules or something?
With the restaurant's alcohol license.
ABC says it's gotta be sealed coming in.
Right.
Can't be open because it cares what they drank.
Just say in compliance with, uh, uh, ABC license forty-one.
Alcohol may only be consumed.
I mean, how can I charge them a corkage fee if they've already opened it on their way in?
I suggest we use the ABC.
Your grandmother in Boston would've figured that.
Believe me, she would've let him have it. You know how she was. Yeah.
Okay, so, we would just make sense, Chris, Commissioner Marks, alcohol may only be consumed in compliance with the restaurant's ABC license. Would that reflect?
I think so, then we don't need to specify anything more, just all the code, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and then we got John's motion for the five-year review.
So that would be, um, five years from the date of approval, um, the.
Staff will review.
Staff will bring a review.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a standard condition for that we can add. Okay.
Okay, so we got, do I have a second?
I was the second.
Second. Kathleen, give us a roll call, please.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's go have pizza.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Can't wait to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And patronize local businesses.
Right. Okay, moving along, uh, the event of the evening. Item four B coastal development permit number nineteen oh two-five, conditional use permit number nineteen zero zero five, temporary use permit nineteen oh nineteen, a follow-up application to the emergency coastal development permit numbers nineteen oh five and oh fourteen for the establishment and temporary use of a lay-down yard, permanent retention of the onsite improvements and use of the site for parking associated with neighborhood construction services continued from August fifth, and this is the SEC lay-down yard at two-three-eight-three-three Stewart Ranch Road. And we do have some speakers. Okay, staff report, Justine, please.
Thank you and, uh, good evening Chair Euring and members of the planning commission. The project before you this evening is, as you just said, CDP nineteen zero two-five, the follow-up application to ECDP numbers nineteen zero zero five and nineteen zero fourteen. Uh, conditional use permit nineteen zero zero five for the permanent use of the property for parking associated with neighborhood construction services and a temporary use permit, uh, number nineteen zero nineteen to allow for the continued use of the property until the end of the year or the work, um, by the applicant is completed, whichever comes first. The subject property is at the end of Stewart Ranch Road, uh, west of the Chili Cook-Off site. It's commonly known as the Bell parcel and is owned by Surf Rider Partners. I just want to be clear, I think there's been some confusion, um, about this being the, um, property that the city owns. It is not owned by the city. Um, the site has historically been used as a nursery and is disced annually to reduce fire fuel. And you can see some historical pictures that we've, um, found. This is the northern portion of the property in nineteen sixty-one, um, when it was previously used as a nursery for, um, as stated here, geraniums. This is an aerial photograph taken in two thousand eight. Um, you can see the greenhouses are still there, although, um, this picture would've been taken after they were damaged by the two thousand and seven fire and they've since been removed. And in two thousand and twelve, um, uh, an archaeological study was done and these site photographs were taken at that time showing, um, again, the greenhouses and the conditions of the site after it had recently been disced. Following the fire last November, um, SCE Southern California Edison identified the need for urgent and critical infrastructure upgrades and repairs to reduce the risk of wildfire caused by their facilities and equipment. Uh, the work was determined to be urgent, urgent and, uh, to constitute an emergency. And the permit process was expedited to facilitate the completion of the work prior to the start of fire season. To that end, an over-the-counter permit was granted to allow the preparation of the site as a lay-down and staging yard, uh, including the removal of the existing vegetation, the application of, uh, rock gravel, installation of a perimeter fence and storm water management features. Uh, with an ECDP that followed to allow the actual use of the site, um, as again, a staging yard where SCE could, um, uh, store materials, equipment, trucks. They would use this site as a meeting area, um, and disperse crews from this site. They've since, the applicant is here to answer questions and to talk more about the work that they've done, uh, out of this site, but they've completed to date, I believe, fifteen thousand inspections of their infrastructure throughout the city in the immediately adjacent areas, um, and so far completed, uh, over three thousand, um, instances of repair or maintenance or upgrades and are, um, currently preparing to do some, some more significant work throughout the city. Um, the over-the-counter permit was incorrectly approved, um, without the hundred-foot buffer from the wetland on the adjacent property, which is known as the Smith parcel, um, which would be to the west on this picture. Um, and this site plan shows, um, where the fence was originally placed. Seven days after the placement of the fence, um, the fence was moved, um, per the city biologist's instructions and under, uh, it was inspected by a senior planner, a senior planning staff as well. Um, and this is the current configuration of the site. When the original ECDP and the OC were granted, um, it was, um, estimated that the work would be completed in a hundred and twenty days. The work was not completed within that time and so, uh, subsequent ECDP was granted to allow the continued use of the site while the CDP was being reviewed. Uh, the original intention of the applicant SCE, per their agreement with the property owner, was to return the site to its original condition. However, the owner has requested that the fence and the gravel, um, remain in order to facilitate the future use of the site as a parking lot, um, for this type of work and temporary events. In addition, the site was treated with, um, or the soil was stabilized by treating it with, um, cement and mixing the, the top eight to twelve inches with a five percent cement mixture. That information was not included on the submitted plans, uh, for the over-the-counter permit, which was approved to prepare the site. The property owner has requested to retain the cement-treated soil as well, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit. Um, we've received a number of correspondence, um, from the public, including neighbors, um, and the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth, who have commented on the project and expressed concern that the property previously or currently contains a wetland which should be, um, respected, protected and restored. Um, a freshwater pond and wetland are confirmed on the adjacent Smith parcel as mapped by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. A jurisdictional delineation conducted in nineteen ninety-eight and updated in both two thousand and two and two thousand and eighteen described the wetland as being wholly contained on the Smith parcel. And you can see, um, a little bit more granular detail. This is from the two thousand and eighteen updated jurisdictional delineation. It's a little bit small, but, um, you can see the wetland is fully contained in that blue area with the non-native vegetation, um, forming a buffer between the wetland on the Smith parcel and the Bell property to the east. It was also determined, uh, by staff that the site's previous agricultural use and annual disking would preclude the presence of sensitive habitats on the Bell property. And, um, previous reports, including those conducted by SCE and the property owner separately, conclude that no wetland is or was present on the subject property. Um, and the city biologist is here this evening, uh, to help answer questions or concerns about this. As I mentioned before, the applicant has, um, requested, still has quite a bit of work to do. They are required to finish their upgrades, um, and repairs, um, in the area by the end of the year. Um, and the property owner has requested, um, to continue the use of the property in this way and again, for temporary events, um, as a parking lot in the future. And so requested conditional use permit, um, to allow that. Staff is recommending denial, denial of the conditional use permit as parking, um, as a permanent standalone use is not currently allowable in the city. And, um, allowing the use as a neighborhood-serving, um, construction service. This project doesn't really meet the definition of a construction service, um, primary use as defined by the LCP. That definition is that construction service companies, including but not limited to paving electrical painting and plumbing contractors which provide construction support services primarily to local residents and business owners. Ancillary uses of such businesses may include outdoor storage and maintenance of equipment and materials used in the course of normal business operations. The project, as it's being used right now, really, um, meets the definition of an ancillary use and without a primary use, well, we could not make the findings to recommend approval for the CUP. To that end, the, um, uh, temporary use permit to allow the continued use, um, of the property by Southern California Edison was requested and staff is recommending the approval of the TUP to allow the continued use, um, through the end of twenty nineteen or until the work is completed, whichever comes first. This TUP would not be effective, um, for twenty-four days following the, uh, adoption of the resolution, which would be around September twelfth, just as a FYI. And again, the applicant is here to answer questions about the work that, um, is still needed. Uh, I should also note that the site will be used during the upcoming Chili Cook-Off event, um, over Labor Day weekend, um, for parking. The TUP would, has also been, um, requested with an alteration of, uh, the way the site is currently laid out. And given the concern of the public about the conditions of the lower portion of the site and its proximity to the wetland on the Smith parcel, um, SCE has proposed to reduce their use of the yard and begin restoration of the southern half of the property while they continue to use the northern half. And you can see that, uh, change reflected here in this, um, proposed site plan. They would, uh, if you, you know, everybody drove up past the lot this, uh, evening, where the two brown trailers are would be the southern limit of the, the property moving forward. Um, and they would restore the site, um, below that, um, beginning as, uh, as soon as the Chili Cook-Off is over. And then restore the remainder of the site, um, within thirty days of the cessation of the use of the site entirely. The restoration includes three main components. One would be the mitigation of the cement-treated soil, um, and there are two options available to the planning commission. Um, and, and we can discuss them further if you have questions about them. Public Works staff is here this evening to, to talk about some of the details of that. The two options are, uh, removal of all of the gravel on the top twelve inches of the soil, um, which would be about, um, eight thousand cubic yards of export and then importing eight thousand cubic yards of clean soil. Or removing all of the gravel and tilling the top twenty-four inches of the soil, um, which would mean that there was no import or export of the soil from the site. In either option, the permeability of the soil and of the site would be tested to ensure that the, this drainage and the hydrology of the site have not changed. And the recontoring of the site to make sure, again, that the hydrology or the drainage of the site has not changed would be required in, under either option. Um, and then finally, reseeding of the land with native seed, um, as required by the city biologist. But it should be noted that this native seed would not result in the property being, um, considered escher in the future. Um, and to be clear, this does mean that staff is recommending all development, including the fence and the gravel would be removed, um, under, under the current resolution. So to summarize, um, staff is recommending the approval of the coastal development permit, which is the follow-up application to ECDP numbers nineteen oh five and fourteen, to memorialize the work that's already been completed and to enforce the, um, conditions under which both of those ECDPs were granted. And that would include restoring the site to its original condition, to deny the CUP for the use of the property, um, as parking associated with the neighborhood construction services and to approve the temporary use permit to allow the continued use, um, of the northern half of the property only, um, through the end of twenty nineteen or until the work is completed with full restoration of the site required within thirty days of the cessation of the use of the site. Uh, I am available for questions, as is, um, the city biologist, um, Public Works staff and applicant.
Justine, thank you very much. They give you the easy ones, huh? All right, disclosures, guys.
Nothing recent, but, uh, for what it's worth, um, in the mid nineteen seventies, the Smith property was known as Crummer Field. It was a, it was a, um, horse show arena. Personally participated in at least two shows at that site and attended several others. And if you want to go back further, nineteen fifty, plus or minus a couple of years, it was a rodeo ground. I attended a rodeo put on by the LA County sheriffs, uh, on that site. So, um, just, the site has had a, a lot of history.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, um, I attended Webster Elementary School for, so for several years, I rode the school bus past this site every day. And remember it as being often swampy in a patch extending from Smith all the way over to Legacy Park. The part of that time. The part of that time, the road was aligned in a different way, where Winter Canyon Road came down parallel to the highway and just turned into the highway at the very last moment. And at some point, it was realigned, maybe the early 70s, I think, to come down the hill and match up with Civic Center Way. And so I think maybe what happened is that when the road was realigned and sort of brought out into the south end of this parcel, it was graded in such a way that it cut off communication of water between the Smith parcel and what was over on the Legacy Park side. So I don't know if that, and looking at photos from, which I've also just done apart from the staff report, looking at photos from the 1930s, seeing water communicating all the way across that area. It seems like it's been broken by, when they regraded, and as I say, I think it was the early 70s, and I don't know whether, if that's a legitimate grading, does that change the status in some way if it's less wet now than it was then? And I think we have testimony that it is still wet sometimes. So anyway, that's what I saw when I was a kid.
Commissioner Mazza.
I have none, except that I talked to Pat Healy this afternoon for about five minutes to make sure, she wanted to make sure I had read her comments, which were very good, but I hadn't read them yet. I've been on vacation, so I just got back last night.
Commissioner Marks.
My comment certainly is colorful, as to refer to, I am familiar with the parcel. I did also speak with Pat on this, and nothing beyond that.
Okay, I spoke with Genevieve from SCE. I spoke to Robert, who I guess is the project manager and yard manager for the plant. And I spoke to, there was a gentleman who was with you, an assistant, and I can't remember his name because I'm getting old. He also gave us some information of what was going on. We walked the yard, took a look at the soil, the gravel there with the cement below it, walked over to the wetland, got a real good look at that. I spoke to Bruce Silverstein, who gave me his perspective on what's going on. I spoke to Pat Healy. And just for what it's worth, I live up on Malibu Knowles. So my breakfast table overlooks this piece of property, okay? And I've been there for 30 years, so I've had a chance to take a look at the stuff. A couple things that at least my perspective has been, is that the house next to me down the hill has got a tree with red-tailed hawks, okay, that have been breeding there forever. And they have used this, I mean, you see them constantly flying over this field trying to do something, whether they're catching stuff or they're not catching stuff, I don't know, but they're always floating around down there. Second thing was when it rained and there was ponding. I believe it was one of the March Planning Commission meetings. I even mentioned to Bondi that the ponding that was taking place down there was so substantial that it looked like a wetland, and I asked her where it was going to go, and she said we're going to have to do more work to figure that out. But there was enough significant ponding down there that it became obvious that there was something going on. So I think that's all that I know at the moment.
Yeah, and I have to add, I was in on that tour of the site, too, and I did speak briefly with both Bruce and Pat.
Okay. So with that, we're going to open up the public hearing, and I just want to make sure before I do that, I've got the applicant team, and let me just make sure I know, they're going to get 15 minutes, is that not correct?
Yeah.
They're going to get 15, and so the whole team gets 15 minutes to speak. You can split it up any way you want. Let me just sort of identify the people that I think are on the applicant team. There's Rudy Gonzalez, okay? Len Maylo? Michael Draber? Brian Fiegus? And Robert, you're here also.
I'm here.
Okay, so that, those are the people who are on the applicant team. So you, as a group, get 15 minutes. And my friend, give him a 15-minute timer, because he's only got three.
And if he wants to reserve anything for rebuttal.
And what you get to do at the end, you guys can reserve some time. So if there's issues that come up and you want to have a chance to rebut them, you'll get a chance to do that.
I'd like to make a quick comment.
Go ahead, John.
I just want to thank everybody who submitted written material. It's very rare that we get such detailed and well-researched material from so many people. So we are already looking at hundreds of pages of testimony.
I was going to say, yeah, there's 60 pages of written stuff in the last couple of days. Okay, my friend, you're on.
Great, thank you so much. I'm Rudy Gonzalez. I'm Southern California Edison's Government Relations Manager, and I cover the Malibu area as part of my area responsibility. Good evening, Chair Euring, Commissioners, Ms. Blue. I want to start my comments by just saying thank you to the community for the patience that they've exhibited as we've been undertaking this important work. We have subjected the community to planned work. We've subjected it to inspections by helicopters, by outside crews. We realize we're having a significant impact on the community, and our intent is to try to be out of here as quickly as we can, and hopefully with the cooperation that we receive, we hope to be out of the area well before the end of the year. Since the Thomas and Woolsey fires, our singular focus is to make our facilities as fire-safe as possible. And we're doing so by completing this work that resulted from the inspections that we've completed over the course of the last several months. As I mentioned earlier, our goal is to complete this work prior to the windy fire season. What are the benefits to having the lay-down yard here in Malibu? It creates efficiencies by cutting down on travel time. Normally, the service center that serves this area is based out of Thousand Oaks. By having the yard here locally, we're able to address emergency situations that come up in a much shorter timeline. Again, lower response time because the trucks are already here in Malibu. Less congestion on the canyon roads. We have, as I mentioned, a significant amount of work being done by not only Edison crews, but many contract crews from outside the area who would normally be driving in through the canyon roads were it not for the fact that we had the yard here in Malibu. Again, our ultimate goal is to minimize the need to implement our public safety power shut-off. And by allowing us to complete this important work, we are doing things like installing covered conductor on much of the circuitry in this area. And all the work that we're doing has a singular goal of making our facilities more fire-safe and minimizing the possibility of having to implement our public safety power shut-off plan. Finally, a side benefit to a local organization is if we're allowed to stay on the property, the Boys and Girls Club and Edison have come to an agreement, along with the property owner, to be able to utilize the property for parking and to also utilize our existing trailers on-site so that they don't have to bear the expense of bringing out their own trailer. So we've got several folks that, who are subject matter experts in areas that I'm not a technical expert in. The first one I'd like to introduce is Robert Harmio, and he's going to talk a little bit about the work that we're conducting there. And I assure you, it will be well-done before our 15 minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Just real quick, I wanted to elaborate a bit on what Rudy had previously mentioned. As far as the PSPS program, bringing these circuits up to as fire-safe as possible is pretty much the reason we are here. He mentioned covered conductor, and we've already had instances where this conductor has come together and nothing has happened. We didn't even know about it until the customer called in, where normal bare wire that's up there now would ignite and create a flash. We're also putting in cameras, weather stations, and new animal wildlife protection materials that also help lessen the chance of an ignition. And when the winds start blowing, when these circuits are beefed up, the criteria for those circuits to be turned off has been raised, and we can avoid the PSPS. The change to the yard that was suggested, to cut the yard in half, I just wanted to speak to that one brief second, in that Rudy did say that we were working very efficiently, and we have completed a ton of work down in this area. To change the yard at this point would be moving backwards. We're going to have the same amount of equipment, the same amount of people trying to maneuver in the yard, and it's going to take them twice as long, if not longer. That many pieces of equipment trying to do the same operation in a yard half the size is going to create a lot of idle time and less time out in the field actually getting the work completed. So it's my recommendation, be in the yard foreman down there, leave it as is, and allow us the room to maneuver, get out the yard, and actually complete the work that needs to be done out in the field. I'd like to turn it over now.
My name is Lenny Maylo. I'm a biologist and ecologist, working for Southern California Edison. I've done hundreds of wetland delineations over the past 22 years. I graduated from University of California, Berkeley, master's degree from USF. This is what I, you know, do for a living. I want to reiterate something that was said by the Commissioners. You know, as these comment letters are coming in, we're diligently reviewing them and looking at them. Some came in 12:30 today. We are going through them. There really doesn't appear to be any new information that's coming in, in this stuff. I want to emphasize that the delineation work that was done was based on the most up-to-date regulations, written policies, and guidance from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The site is an upland. That's based on site-specific analysis of the soils, the vegetation, and hydrology that's there. The only thing that I would add at this point is, I think there was a question about historically what this site looked like, and maybe there was some roadwork or some grading. From a regulatory perspective, with the Army Corps of Engineers, Regional Board, wetland delineations, waterway delineations, they have a shelf life. On the long end of the scale, maybe you can get five years out of it. They can go as short as 12 or 24 months. The agency has something called a new normal circumstance. So as soon as you've altered the hydrology, changed things in such a way that the functions and values are markedly different, it gets delineated, regulated, and managed differently. And I think with that, that's all I have to say at this point. Obviously, we're available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much. You've got seven minutes and 45 seconds left for rebuttal.
We'll reserve it for rebuttal, yes.
Happy with that? Okay. Kathleen, very good. So let's move along. We've got, let me get that list over here. I have, oh, sorry. No, we're not done. Alexis Area. Is there an Alexis? No? Okay. Georgiana Gofarb? Georgiana?
She's giving a minute to me.
Pat Healy, okay. Pat, you want to come up? Pat? And you've got four minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth is requesting the restoration of the site and the restoration of the seasonal wetland on the southern portion of the Bell property, which Edison's storage yard destroyed in violation of their emergency CDP, the Coastal Act, and the Malibu Local Coastal Plan. And as mitigation measures, there are penalty for Edison's unpermitted destruction of the wetland, we would like you to find as follow. Deny the regular CDP and the staff recommended TUP, since both are not allowed under the Malibu Local Coastal Plan. As a result, Edison has to comply with the, has to restore the property and the wetland. And we are asking you, if they don't agree to do that, to require the maximum daily monetary penalty allowed under the, by the Coastal Commission. We're asking that all fences, equipments, trucks, et cetera, be removed by the end of August. However, the city will forego imposing penalties and commencing enforcement proceedings until the end of the year, provided Edison agrees to the following. The site must be restored by the date certain. We're recommending no later than November 2020, which is the start of the rainy season. And it includes removing all the gravel, cement, importing the same type of hydroic soil to restore the site to its former topographical elevations and drainage patterns. If the Commission chooses not to require enforcement until the year-end, then adopt the staff alternative and require the restoration to be completed no later than, again, November And that it be restored in such a way that, in the winters of heavy rainfall, that it be restored with the appropriate hydroic plants. When the Edison requires the hiring of a qualified restoration expert by the middle, mid-September to create a plan to restore the seasonal wetland per the LIP wetland restoration provisions, and the same hydroic plants that are on the Smith property unless other hydroic plants are recommended by a wetland restoration expert. Require the appropriate plants to be placed in the surrounding 100-foot wetland buffer as recommended by the expert. It's important that this buffer between Bell and the Smith wetland be planted correctly since they are connected in years of heavy rainfall when the Smith wetland has intruded onto the Bell property. Require the wetland and buffer restoration plan to be approved by the Planning Commission before the year, this year's end. That the remainder of the site be reseeded or planted with non-invasive plants, as the city biologists recommended. And that will attract the owls and other raptors and other birds that foraged on the site in the past. Require Edison to monitor and maintain the restored wetland for five years, to remove invasive plants, and to ensure recovery required, require long-term adaptive management of the restored areas for a period of not less than 10 years, as required by LIP 4.8. Require Edison to immediately post a completion bond in the amount of $2 million to ensure this restoration takes place, and the bond will be forfeited if it doesn't take place in a timely manner. And we'd also like you to find that this is a seasonal wetland, based on the evidence and the record, and recommend to the council they seek the required LCP amendment stating that the restored wetland and its buffer is the designated ESHA. And since the time is limited, I'm not going to really dwell on anything else. You have my extensive comments. But as a side note, this week's Time Magazine says, "In the 10 years leading up to 2016, forests, wetlands, and other land systems have soaked up 11.2 billion metric tons of carbon dioxide." This wetland may be a small one, but it has a role to play in absorbing carbon dioxide and will help with the control of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Bruce Silverstein, you're up next, please.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
It would appear we're having a little trouble with our beep.
The beeper's not working.
Yeah, so I'll make a beep noise.
You.
At the appropriate time.
Yeah, it had to be a beep.
Okay, Bruce, you've got eight minutes, assuming we've got some of these participants here. John? John, good?
Latisha.
Latisha? Okay, very good. Gigi Goyet, are you? Okay. Rosie? Is there Rosie here? Ah, Rosie, very good.
Alexis, sorry, I was out.
Yeah, Alexis, you've called, okay. You want to speak, or are you giving time to Bruce?
No, you can speak.
Well, I can go first if you want.
Okay, we'll come back and get you then, right? Okay. And then Marie Stanley also is giving you, you've got eight minutes.
Okay, thank you. So good evening, everybody. And I appreciate the time to speak. Let's go back in time to November, when it's widely believed by almost everyone, except perhaps SCE, that SCE started the fire that substantially burned Malibu. So their negligence was the reason we're here in the first place. After that, they had an emergency yard set up on the chili cook-off lot, where they dumped a bunch of gravel, possibly cement, because nobody's gone over there and done an analysis of that. But they did that because they needed, truly, as an emergency of their own creating, but an emergency to restore power to Malibu. They had a lot going 24/7. They had industrial lights that were up all night. There were crews going back and forth, police escorts, I believe, I even remember. And that was fine. That was an emergency. We all lived with that. The emergency now is another emergency of their own creation, if it's an emergency at all. Now, it is Malibu's mission, from the day this became a city, to preserve the open spaces, wildfire, wildlife, pardon that mistake, and plant life. And of laying out the wildlife, plant life, and other environmentally sensitive areas that are on the spot that's been destroyed. Interesting, now, let's go back, I said, some historical perspective. SEC initially asked to use the Chili Cook-Off Lot for the work that's being done now. That made perfect sense. In fact, on January 22nd, an email went to the city. That was the first request. And it said, "The site is perfect for our needs." The Chili Cook-Off Lot is perfect for our needs. And at that time, the needs were three months to get this done. Nothing else was going to really happen there. What did the city do in response to the supposed emergency? Now, either there is an emergency or there's not an emergency. Well, the city said, Riva Feldman said, "We need the lot for the Schumash days." Two days in April, when there's some parking needed. SCE said, "That's okay. We'll be done by then." Turns out, we now know they weren't, but at the time, that was what was being said. "We'll be done by then." This is in the record of the city's emails. And then the response from the city was, "Well, you can't have it anyway. We have other things we need it for." So then they were forced to go get a different spot, which is the lot that we're now referring to, the Bell property. A lot of requirements weren't followed. And then there's a chart up there. You've heard from a biologist who says that, based on going out to the site after the destruction was done, he's satisfied that there was no wetland. And all he said was "wetland." Well, the law requires, before any work be done, that there be determinations made that there's no wetland, no ESHA, and no environmentally sensitive area. That's a defined term in the law. Goes way beyond wetlands and ESHA. And there are delineations in the statute as to what constitutes those areas. And before any disruptive work can be done, first of all, adjacent to a documented wetland or ESHA, there must be a biology assessment. Well, we all know the property next door. Everybody admits it. The property next door has been a documented wetland and ESHA for a long time. And the city knew that, and SCE should have known that. But the work was done full speed ahead without any of the proper assessments. We will never know whether the property that was bulldozed and cemented over, paved over, has the other qualifications of environmentally sensitive area because the evidence has been destroyed. I'm not saying destroyed intentionally, but it has been destroyed. And in most legal proceedings, there's a presumption when a party destroys evidence, which is you find against them on the issues that the evidence might otherwise reveal otherwise. So there was no biology report submitted in advance. There were no determinations made in advance that this wasn't an environmentally sensitive area. Had that determination been made, there may have been a requirement for the city biologist to prepare a report. There may have been a requirement for an environmental review board assessment. Again, none of that was done, and we'll never know whether it should have been done or shouldn't have been done because the evidence of whether it should have been done was destroyed. There are numerous other violations that have to do with the timings of applications. Neither of these applications before you tonight are properly timed. There was at least one document that, as best I can tell, was forged because it was notarized and then appears to have been changed after it was notarized, which is unlawful. That was the initial application. Now, the city, on its own website, has a document. I handed out a copy earlier that you hopefully have, that talks about when biological studies are required for review of development projects. And it says quite clearly, "If the project's not exempt," and none of the exemptions apply. Nobody's arguing that they do. "If the project's not exempt, a biological study is required." The type of report required will depend upon where your proposed development is situated relative to a known mapped ESHA. If your proposed development is not within 200 feet, not 100, if it's not within 200 feet, which it is, a biological inventory shall be submitted. And if your biological inventory indicates the presence or potential for sensitive species or habitat, or if your proposed development occurs within 200 feet of a known ESHA, a detailed biological assessment is required. And then there's a whole list of things that need to be done that weren't done. How am I doing for time?
Ten minutes and a half. Two minutes left.
Okay. I have some pictures that I wanted to show. I guess one of the findings you're going to be required to make tonight to support the applications, and there's many findings you have to make, is that the, this site doesn't disturb the scenic or visual beauty of this area. I mean, I defy anyone in this room, other than the employees of SEC, to say that they agree that there's no disruption of the scenic or visual aspect of this. I have a bunch of pictures. I mean, the pictures you saw, by the way, showed, were either very distant or they were from drought periods. I have photos from 2004, 2017, 2018, and just days before this disruption occurred that show a lush, green, living field. And I live just above this. And by the way, I'm not complaining about this because I live above it. I'm here to be able to document what happened because I live above it. I wouldn't have known of it otherwise. I had owls and hawks that would perch on my balcony annually. I haven't seen them since this work was done. I have, I've submitted a document to you all. I hope you've had the time to read it. There's, what I'm saying right now is just the tip of the iceberg. There's many procedural and substantive problems with this application, and I urge the commission to deny the application. You don't have to force them to leave. Deny the application. Don't facilitate their being here. If they really need to be here and really need to do the work, they can get it done, and then there'll be a price to pay, which is a proper remediation, and not a restoration to what they believe was the non-protected area, a restoration to what was and ought to be presumed to be a protected area. If I have any further time, I would appreciate. Do I have any further time?
Yeah, 13 seconds left.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, thank you very much. Patrick Perry, you're up next. Followed, now there's Brad Bell, you're... And Andrew Seedor? Is there an Andrew Seedor? You're with SEC. SCE, SEC, right. Go ahead, Patrick.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Perry. I'm representing Surf Rider Partners, Brad Bell. Mr. Bell is also present here. Our concern has to do with the requirement that the property be restored following SCE's, you know, cessation of operations on the property. As your staff report has indicated, this property has been disturbed. It's been disturbed for decades, from what I can see. I've reviewed the reports that have been provided by SCE's consultants, and we're concerned about the removal of the site improvements. Side improvements, what I'm referring to are the soil stabilizers, the gravel, and the perimeter fencing. The rest of the improvements, obviously, will be removed when SCE is finished with its work on the site. But the remaining soil, site improvements, I don't understand that there's really an issue from a use perspective. I've not seen anything in your code that prohibits or requires a permit for someone to maintain soil stabilizers, perimeter fencing, or gravel on their property. The reports that the consultants have prepared indicate that there is no wetland, has been no wetland on the property historically, that the maintenance of the site improvements will not have any effect on surface water hydrology, will not have any effect on groundwater quality, will not have any effect on biological resources. This is not environmentally sensitive habitat area. So there really will be no harm done as a result of maintaining the site improvements on the property. Your code allows fencing up to six feet in height without a permit. The property directly across the street has a fence on it as well of similar height. So again, we don't see any rationale or justification for the removal or restoration of the property, removal of the site improvements as presently existing on the property. And we're available if you have any questions. Mr. Bell's here to speak as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Patrick, thank you very much. Mr. Bell, do you want to speak now?
Sure.
Two more, then you're up.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Brad Bell, and I'd just like to go back in time when I was approached by SCE. It was right after the devastating fires, and I think all concerned citizens were wanting to do something to pitch in for the cause. And that's how this all began. I wanted to do my part and to facilitate, you know, the repair and the rebuild of Malibu. So all good intentions. This property is in the Civic Center Downtown Core. It's a zone commercial. It's part of the Phase 1 sewer system. I think this property could add a lot of benefits to the community. I've been approached for the pumpkin patch, Mr. Bone's Pumpkin Patch, Mr. Green Trees. We're already talking with Tony Dorn, and he's going to be there with the Boys and Girls Club. I think that as the city is growing, as cities do, this land can be something that really would benefit the community. You mentioned, I go to the farmer's market on Sunday, too, and it's hard to find a parking spot. And, you know, I would just like to continue being a concerned, involved citizen and work with the city and, you know, have my property be something positive that can, you know, do positive things for the Malibu experience, for the citizens of Malibu, and help out in this Downtown Core District. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, thank you very, very much.
Oh, may I say one more thing?
Right ahead, absolutely.
Okay. You know, the fence, the fence is very important, just as you have a fence across the street. Without a fence in the downtown area, you know, I've had people four-wheeling in there. I've had, you know, people trespassing in there, people camping out in there. It's really, you know, in the heart of town, and a fence is something, all the other properties have it. And a fence is really, I think, important for safety of the citizens and for all of our well-being. And, you know, the gravel would facilitate future use for the property that I think could be beneficial. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, we have Andy Lyon, followed by Alexis.
I used to play in the geranium field down there as a kid. Broke a lot of windows in those greenhouses as a kid. Been around here a long time, and seeing that lot turned into an industrial zone is pretty upsetting. I don't live above it, but I pass it daily. And to see, it's, to me, it's a nice, or I don't know exactly what's going on there, if it was supposed to be done in 120 days. I don't see, I mean, I drove by today, it didn't seem like a lot of trucks coming in and out. They said they're doing stuff. I know there was a helicopter hovering over my house for days, and that was pretty wonderful, too. But to just go ahead and blast through what they did because they said, like, the city, I don't know who should be accountable, the city that let them do it, SCE, the Bell, who's going to take the hit on this for letting it go down? You know, after the fact, you know, Schumash days, there was probably 20 cars in the parking lot for Schumash days, maybe, maybe? You know, and now they're going to play the card of, like, we're going to do good with the Boys and Girls Club, so we're going to use the kids, so let's use that, and we'll keep it here? This is lame. I say, you know, it's sort of like, we're going to fix the guy. We just amputated his legs, and we're going to try and patch him back up, you know? I don't see how you're going to put that thing back together. And the accountability. And so, like, what do we just, is this said at president, we're just going to go, you know, giving people parking lots? You know, I mean, do we really need another parking lot? The Chili Cook-Off has got an acre that's supposed to be a parking lot? The Triangle Parcel is like an acre that's got to be a parking lot? I mean, you know, if we need, you know, the city owns the Chili Cook-Off, are we just, like, holding that closed for the weekend so that, you know, we have a necessity for this thing? You know, put it back the way it was. Let's see some kind of, like, progress reports, maybe? I don't know. I mean, what are we, what are we actually seeing? I don't see a lot of movement. I see guys cruising around there. I see a lot more cars and a lot more trucks in there, but I don't see a lot of, if they were supposed to be done in 120 days, it looks like they haven't even started, in my book, but I'm not an expert, but I don't see a lot going on down there. And I don't see a lot cruising around town. And to me, it's like, if they got to drive over the hill, like, I got to go drive over the hill. I can't, you know? I mean, it's like, pretty convenient, I guess, but is that, is that what Malibu's about? Like, we're going to destroy the center of town, turn it into an industrial zone for the convenience of these guys? Guys got to look at that and really do the right thing and, like, pull the pin on this and get this thing back to the way it was. Thanks.
Andy, thank you very much. Alexis.
I live in central Malibu, so I'm pondering some points, including points regarding alleged negligence of Southern California Edison. And also, like, for the metrics of the word temporary, what does that mean? What are the metrics? I don't know if they've given us that. After what Malibu has been through, it's very, I think it behooves us to consider what's convenient for Malibu residents and not for Southern California Edison. Also, firstly, a public health study needs to be administered to see if there are any potential health hazards for SCE setting up operations, and it should have been done before. Similar public studies, public health studies have displayed some disconcerting data. So we want to make sure that it's a very populated residential and commercial zone. And also, Southern California Edison is under investigation and also litigation with certain entities and individuals in Malibu. So if Southern California is operating at all hours of the day without oversight, is there a possibility of the investigation or the litigation not being pure and being compromised? So numerous Malibu residents recommend a no vote, or at least a delay on the vote, so that much more studies can be done on this. Thank you.
Alexis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody else, that's the last speaker slip I have, would anybody else like to speak on this subject? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up to the commission.
I think they have rebuttal time.
Rebuttal?
Oh, rebuttal time. I apologize. I forgot.
Before, there's a disclosure, an obvious disclosure that I failed to make. I'm a litigant in a lawsuit against Southern California Edison. I don't think it has much to do with this, but what do you think, Trevor? Is it what?
It's above my head. You're in, what is the nature of the lawsuit? Is it, you're named as an individual?
My house burned down. Yeah, we're suing, you know, class, not, you know, class plaintiff, mass plaintiff action.
Well, you're directly adverse to the applicant here.
Are there firewalls between different departments at SCE?
Well, I think, in this case, in a sense of caution, maybe a good idea to recuse yourself in this, from this, if you're directly adverse to them.
He just wants to go home.
We've got a similar suit going through our HOA, which I'm a member of, if I need to recuse.
You're not directly named?
No.
Well, if we take a short break?
Yeah, let's take a, yeah.
Let's take a short break.
Okay. Let's take a, it's 8:19. How about 8:30 we'll be back here. We can't talk to you guys during the break, so talk amongst yourselves.
So, if we've all saved them, go home.[555.79]
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you take your seats. Now, where's Trevor?
Where's Trevor?
Where's Trevor?
We still need Trevor.
You've got another minute or two. Trevor is...
I think he recused himself.
Thank you very much for your patience. We will try and get this process moving again.
I think so, yes.
Okay, so where are we, Trevor?
All right. All right. I've spoken with Commissioner Jennings and with Commissioner Marks, and what we have here is a situation where, unrelated to the instant land use application, they are part of sort of a general sort of mass, not individual lawsuits against SCE. The decision here tonight would have no material effect on either of them directly, so we don't have an issue there. Also, the decision tonight wouldn't lead to an unacceptable probability of actual bias in this situation. This is a land use application by Southern California Edison related to a particular lot to use it temporarily. I asked the commissioners whether their current status in this litigation would have any effect on their decision tonight, or...
No.
And I'd also note for the record, the city of Malibu itself is in litigation, a similar type of litigation against Southern California Edison, so this is something common in Malibu, and I wouldn't say they would have any particular effect on the decision tonight for just a temporary land use application. So I would say that you have the ability to proceed if you, gentlemen, are comfortable that that situation wouldn't have any effect on your decision tonight. Thank you.
You guys should have picked another body to come from, right? All right, you've got rebuttal. Seven minutes and 45 seconds left. You're on.
I just wanted to, you know, after listening to these things, I wanted to point out a couple things based on our analysis today. The first thing is, is that Edison started doing a biological analysis, a natural resources analysis on this site in late January, and we were onsite doing digging soil pits and doing field analysis by the 15th of February. We did a full-blown biotech report, and we did a complete jurisdictional delineation.
By when? When was that?
What year?
That was this year, and we started the field work on the 15th, which is before all these improvements were completed, is my understanding. The site was not designated as an ECHA. We looked at the criteria of what makes something an ECHA. The site was not designated as a seasonal wetland. It wasn't designated as special status species habitat. There were no hydroric soils found when we dug soil pits on the site, and there were no hydroric plants on the site either. I think it's important to note that the temporary actions that Edison has taken on the site don't modify the ultimate underlying land use in any way, so that doesn't permanently... there's no net loss of wetlands or waters or habitat based on the temporary activities that have gone on. And it also, the work that's gone on here, does not impact known wildlife linkages or corridors. And when you look at the larger watershed, it's mathematically insignificant, the impacts that have occurred on low-quality upland, non-native species habitat versus the amount of other habitat which is essentially held in conservation or open space within the watershed. And I would put that in the context as well of folks talking about raptors and foraging habitats and things like that. You have to look at a territory from a larger dynamic than the footprint of the six acres that we're talking about.
I'll be very brief in my wrap-up comments. Again, I just want to thank the community for the patience that they've displayed in allowing us to get this work done. We, as a public, investor-owned public utility, are highly regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission, but that doesn't diminish the fact that we have to work with local governments as we operate locally. We'd like to think that we have a strong partnership with all of our local government agencies, and so, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, folks in the audience understand that, you know, we've got to be above board. There's nothing nefarious about our utilizing this property in any, you know, underhanded way, acquiring it. We went through all the local rules and regulations in terms of obtaining the necessary approvals to be able to utilize it. So, again, thank you for working with us, and we hope to be able to continue the use of the property. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Got some time left. Anybody else? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back up table. Commissioners? Anybody want to start?
Yeah. I've heard a lot of testimony about things that this commission should do and shouldn't do, and so forth, and I'd like to direct the question to staff, because my understanding is that we can... anything that this body does, it's different than the City Council, but anything that this body does has to be related to an application that's in front of us. If somebody wants to submit an application and says, you know, "Can we do this?", we can say, "Yes, you can do it. If you do A, B, and C, and D, we'll let you do it." If we say, "No," that's kind of the end of the discussion. And so, we're not a general enforcement body where we can say, "Okay, you've got to do this, and this, and this, and you've got to restore this, and you've got to get it done. You've got to get it done by next Thursday, or else, you know, the heavens are going to rain down on you." I mean, that's just not our job. So that's question mark. Is that your understanding of the way this body operates?
Yes. So you have an application before you, both for the CDP and for a TUP or CUP for the use of the property. So you had... you're making a decision tonight whether the findings can be made for those, and then what conditions would be required of those. So for the CDP, you could require restoration requirements after the temporary use is completed. That would fall within the gamut. If you just deny everything, then it would fall back to the conditions on the ECDP that required restoration, and that would just come into place.
I just want to clarify though. We add conditions for, like, lighting ordinance. We put conditions on... we modify the resolution to reflect conditions stating when something could take effect. So, I mean, that...
You can... yes, you can add conditions to, for instance, the coastal development permit here that would allow the gravel and development to remain for a period of time, and then required to be removed and restored, because that would be related to what you're allowing in this situation. So you just have to have a nexus and proportionality to what, you know, the impacts are.
John?
Trevor, since this is a... this is a follow-on to a temporary...
It's a follow-to ECDP, yes.
ECDP, which is required, as I understand. Aren't we jurisdictionally okay dealing with that, with the ECDP? Because we're approving the ECDP.
You're not approving the ECDP. You're approving a CDP that would replace the ECDP.
Would replace it?
Yes.
Okay. And if the ECDP didn't follow the right procedures, does that change anything? In other words, you know, the 25 days and all that kind of stuff, and notice, and...
But could the CDP, in response to the ECDP, just be denied? I think is another way to put what John's asking.
Yeah, or portions of it.
Should we not just get into the substance of stuff and see if we get a problem?
While you're thinking of that, I mean, look, there is... I mean, personally, I've got a dilemma of what we do with this thing, all right? My dilemma is that, from a perspective of being an environmentally sensitive community, we have screwed this thing up from the get-go, right? I've got a wetland quarter mile from the City Hall, nobody knew about it, all right? You've got... after the thing was cemented and gravel put on it, we sent a biologist out to take a look and tell me if there's anything sensitive there that got destroyed, and the answer we got back, not surprisingly, he says, "Nothing here except gravel and cement." All right? I've got this jurisdiction... a wetland. No, I mean, I... look, I'm not a biologist. All I know is I sat up in my house for a month and a half and watched water ponding down there, all right? And I know that there was a study back right kind of 2012 that said it looked like a wetland. We had a bunch of drought years. All of a sudden, there's water when there's a bunch of rain. It's worth taking a real serious look at whether that is or isn't a wetland. And, I mean, I look at some of the items in the resolution, okay, the staff report, the findings, and I think a couple of people mentioned them, that said, "This is an eyesore, right? This the least environmentally alternative?" Hell, no. If you put it back on the chili cook-off property where it was, this, we'd be done by now, right? I mean, they would have been finished. They had to move off for the chili cook-off. We wouldn't have to go through any of this. And somebody said, "No, we're not going to do that. Let's move it over there." That said, this is a health and safety issue for the city of Malibu, right? I mean, look, I am not going to be the person who votes against doing something that's going to make the city safer. And with Robert, when we took... I mean, he took me through the process of what they're doing, you know, the insulated wire. I mean, there are things that are going on which are going to make the community safe, and I want them to finish that job, all right? Because if we don't, I think we're screwing everybody in Malibu. That's a bad thing to do. So, you know, I mean, I sit here and think about it and say, you know, I don't particularly like the rules. I don't like the findings for the coastal development permit. However, I'd like to find a way to let them continue to finish their job, all right? Without going through the process of approving something which is done poorly, to say the best. All right? So I've got to figure out a way to do that.
So you have the ability to craft the coastal development permit in terms of what they've applied for, and any protections that you want to put in place while it is allowed to remain temporarily, if that's what the commission wants to do? So it... I think the... one of the proposals was to reduce the size of the lot. If there are other conditions that you think would be required to do this in the best way and the most protective of the environment as possible, you know, what conditions those would be?
Can I interject and say, A, I have a lot of questions for staff, and B, just on the assumption that we've made, I think, obviously, we all agree that safety is important and they should be doing their job, but I have some questions of Edison about the necessity for the lot being actually here in Malibu with regard to the work that they're actually doing, and so going down that line. Maybe there may be some other options. So before we say, "Oh, we obviously all want it here..."
No, we can't say that.
We can't say that, so...
I just... I gave you my opinion.
Yeah.
Now, let me... can I ask Trevor, prior to them being on this lot, they were next door, and that was an ECDP, I assume?
No, it's not.
It wasn't?
No. No. What happened was, and Richard, okay, sent me this, when that originally, after, right after the fire, SCE, S.C.E., S.C.E. wanted to get on there pretty quickly, so there was an agreement that was crafted by Christie, okay, that basically gave them permission to use that lot. I've got a copy of that agreement I want to see.
And Trevor, is that legal?
There was a license agreement that was put to... yeah, that would allow them to use the lot. That doesn't deal with it... that doesn't grant them any entitlements. There were no entitlements granted for it. It was, I believe, in the days right during the emergency, you know, we were under a state of emergency, and the city manager has certain powers in that time. I don't know all the details, but I know that the document that Chair Euring is talking about is not a planning entitlement granting them that. It's just a license agreement saying the city's allowed them to use the city's land.
So let me ask you this. I read that, and it said that they shall restore. Does... and I haven't seen any sign of it, so who deals with that? Us?
Yep, it's our agreement, so if they haven't restored it as required by the license agreement, the city can, you know...
The city does it, not the planning commission?
The city would request them to restore it, and then if they didn't, they would...
So we don't...
They would breach a contract action.
They have the same conditions for that. It just says rest... restore.
Yeah, I don't want to get too sidetracked because it's a different...
Okay. But... so the city can circumvent us and just do something if they want to.
It's not...
If they decide not to restore it, it's never going to get restored. So...
The agreement said they had 30 days to do that. That was the agreement.
So they could be in breach of the agreement.
I don't know. Somebody tell them not to restore it. I have no idea. I mean, that's a question we can take a little bit later. Go ahead, John.
No, I just wondered if emergencies just wipe out the LCP?
They don't wipe out the LCP, but there, in an emergency situation, there are different rules that come into play.
Okay. Commissioner Hill, you've got some questions. Why don't you start us off and see where they take us?
Yeah, I have some for staff and probably for Trevor about the permitting and the city side of it, but also questions for Edison about more the functional side of things. And I'm not sure which ones I should be asking first, but maybe let's talk to Edison and see about the need, and maybe we can get... maybe Robert, I think you might have the best comment on this. Just to get some ballpark numbers so that we and the public have a better understanding of why the site was chosen, and right next to Legacy Park, and, you know, not in an industrial-zoned area. So you have typically, is this right, that you have like a dozen to 20 trucks at any one time working there?
On the site, we have about 12 to 15 crews working, two or three trucks apiece.
And you're carrying out repairs in an area that's ranging from Topanga in the east all the way out to Westlake, and...
Our general service area for this Malibu yard is from Sycamore Canyon up to the 101 down to Topanga.
So sick... almost out near Point Magoo, almost, okay. Now, you said that if you weren't here, you'd be coming from the lot in Thousand Oaks.
We would probably be coming more from Moore Park. The footprint needed for that, those crews, we wouldn't have available in the Thousand Oaks Service Center, and we are currently utilizing the Moore Park substation as an additional lay-down yard with additional crews there, and we would squeeze everybody in. So we would be trying to do the Malibu and the Topanga work from Moore Park.
So the work that's out closer to Sycamore Canyon is closer to Moore Park than it is to Malibu, and I think the work that you'd be doing on the Topanga end is probably... you'd probably be quicker to and fro going on the 101 and going up Topanga to get to it than necessarily, you know, from Civic Center, Malibu to the top of Topanga is almost 35 miles, most of it the twisty road up Topanga, whereas if you're in Moore Park, you come down with the 101. So my question, it seems like a fair amount of your work would be more easily, more quickly accessed from other places, and so the question is, how much of that area really is... is it important that the Malibu lot be serving it?
The Malibu lot, so, you know, unfortunately, we all know that the fire burned through and that we did a lot of rebuild in a short amount of time. During that time...
And maybe this was more convenient six months ago?
And, yeah, and again, even during that period, we had additional yards built out in other areas, but the work that was done, we used everything that we possibly had at our disposal. I mentioned there was new raptor guard and animal protection appliances that we're adding to the poles, the covered conductor, and some of these other apparatus that we're putting on. At the time of the fire, we stocked out the entire industry. We couldn't get our hands on any more covered conductor. Some of these poles, we built them, we put them back up so get power on, and they're missing the wildlife protection. They're missing the guide preforms, and when we went through, our inspections were of every structure in our service territory. We found a lot of those poles that had been rebuilt during the fire we needed to go back to. So there is a lot of work that is still out there, and it is coming in concentrations that are, again, mandated by the CUPC to be completed in a certain amount of time.
So what proportion of the work would be more conveniently, efficiently served from the Malibu lot versus the work that's... would actually, sounds like, be more conveniently served from Moore Park?
Well, as far as the Topanga stuff goes, the majority of the work is in the lower section of Topanga that's closer to the PCH. So that is a big chunk of what we're doing that would be better served from Malibu. And the outline areas of, like, Sycamore and Yerba Buena, the access for our trucks is we've always come up PCH. So we would still be coming...
From Moore Park around, what, Malibu Canyon and around?
Malibu Canyon, yeah.
Not around through Camarillo?
No, because where the Moore Park yard is situated, it's right off the 23, 23 to the 101, and then down and around.
Or Canaan?
Can't go on Canaan with such a size trucks that we use.
So you don't... you can't come up with a sort of a ballpark percentage number of what part of the work really needs, in your view, needs to be in Malibu?
I'd say somewhere around 65% of what we're doing is Malibu area.
So theoretically...
I guess rephrasing it, what... how much... are you saying 65% you feel could be serviced more easily from Moore Park?
No, from Malibu.
The other way around.
He's saying 65% of the work... 65% of the work...
The work they're doing is work inside Malibu. Is that correct?
So not that I necessarily want to go here now or yet, but that raises the thought that maybe, whatever, all else being equal, the work, if you rearrange your schedule, you could get it done 35% sooner by just doing the Malibu stuff first and then getting out. That's just that... we don't need to go there yet, but that's a thought.
Can I ask him a question?
Yeah.
What is actually on the yard besides the trucks? Do you, for example, do you take old transformers off poles and store them there?
We... in our yard, we have the transformers that are being taken down. They're stored onsite. We usually get about 15 or 20, and then we ship them out. We have all the materials, the incidentals, nuts and bolts, if you will, for building the line. We have poles, crossarms, and then the equipment. We have specialized equipment that doesn't get used every day but is needed, so to have it local and in our yard is, again, working more efficiently.
I know transformers used to be filled with dioxin. Do you still have those kind of transformers around?
The transformers that we have are filled with mineral oil, and most of the new ones, we have a new, what we call FR3. I couldn't tell you the exact chemical makeup of it.
But you don't have any of the old ones that you take down, that pole burned down and you bring in?
We could possibly have some older transformers. Everything we bring in is sampled and tested off-site. When we have it on the yard, it's contained in trays, containment trays, and it's all...
Okay. What I've heard, and you can confirm this or not, is that the work of actually laying down the yard was started on February 12, and the permit was February 15, and the bio study didn't happen, we were told was done on the 15th, but the work was basically done by that time. Is that timeline correct there?
The exact timeline, I'd have to go back and check and...
Okay. All right. I think for the moment I have more questions for staff, but thank you very much, Robert.
Well, I just... I'm trying to get my head around kind of the scale of this thing also, and I just...
Yeah.
Maybe if somebody could just kind of weigh in, like, how... 1,000 cubic yards, 30 feet by 30 by 30 feet, right, give or take? So like 8,000 cubic yards. I'm just thinking that would pretty much fill this room eight times over or so? I mean, like, 1,000 cubic yards would pretty much fill this. So when I think about mixing cement into soil for up to 14 inches or more, and that kind of volume, it just leads me to think, we really got to know what we're doing when we reverse this. And the concept of tilling this in and all that kind of stuff, it doesn't make me comfortable at all. I mean, I kind of putting aside the concept of when this is going to be done, shifting more to what we're going to do, I just want to, you know, think the scale and scope.
Commissioner Marks, I agree with you 100%, and one of the things that we get to emotion at some point in time is that I'm going to request that we get back in 30 days, whatever the right timeframe is, a detailed restoration plan, so we know what's going to be done, who's going to be do it, what the methods are that are going to be used to make it work, what the timeframes are, because I... look, and I'm jumping ahead, but I can't... we can't... I can't put the genie back in the bottle. The yard is what it is. It's been done. I didn't put it there, but I can't... nothing I'm going to do is going to... but I think we owe the residents of Malibu a detailed and effective restoration program. That's what they're asking for, that's what they wanted, that's what everybody agreed to do, and we've got to make sure that we've got a plan, at least in my opinion, they can accomplish that. But I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask Don Kowalewski a question? Come on up, Don.
John knows who I am, but for everybody else, my name is Donald Kowalewski. I'm an engineering geologist. I was the first city geologist for the city of Malibu. I've been working in the city of Malibu since 1973.
Okay. My question is, if, and indications are, if there's 14 inches or something of cement mixed with soil on the top of this, what kind of barrier does that form, and how does it change the landscape? Does it... can plants grow in it, and is it solid, or can you till it?
It's a soil cement. The only difference between that and concrete is we're using soil instead of sand and gravel, right?
So if you hit it with a pick...
It's impermeable.
Oh, okay.
It will... impermeable if the sense of the water's going to run off, probably 90% is going to run off. Secondly, the water that soaks into it will leach that cement into the soils below, and if someone tried to till that in, you're going to ruin the soils below for any future use, I mean, normal use, because you're going to have cement in the soil, and it's going to be basically toxic for plants.
So it would be best to remediate that before it rains a lot?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? He's an expert. Anybody who's got any other questions?
Yeah.
Craig?
For him?
No, no. Okay, thank you, Don.
Yeah, for staff, in terms of the emergency status of this, is this... we're not... are we or are we not referring to the same emergency that the city manager declared? We're using a different definition of emergency, right?
You're not granting any emergency permits, so the emergency is not really part of what you're...
Well, I'm trying to get to the timing of things and why things... certain things didn't happen when, in retrospect, they might have, and whether that was... whether we're building the CDP on the ECDP, so how legitimate was that in the first place?
Well, the point is, you mean, you're dealing with an application to take certain action, certain development that's already in place over there, so you're looking at that, you know, whether, you know, the nature of the emergency is not really before the commission at this point. You don't need to make an emergency finding in order to grant the CDP or the TUP in this situation.
Right. So it's a bell that can't be unrung, so to speak. That was a pun, but...
Let me start calling you Sheldon.
So... but the emergency status made it... is it the case that it made it unnecessary to look at the prior biology review and the stuff that, like, the 2008 letter to the Presbyterian Church noting there was ESHA on the property, or...
So when...
We didn't have...
When the application came in, when we first met with Edison, and this was a number of different members of city staff met with Edison, and the urgency involved was that Edison was going to be conducting this work throughout their entire territory, of which Malibu is a small part, and they were proposing to start with Malibu if they could get started right away. And I felt that, under the circumstances with the city having been devastated by the fire, that it was important to make it possible for them to be able to set up and begin this work right away. And so that's how we found... we proposed that they do an emergency CDP in order to get started right away.
So there was no requirement to look at the Presbyterian letter or the 2011 Rincon study that found wetland on the site?
It was... the timeframe was such that they needed to begin right away, and the in-house knowledge of the property was that it had been historically disturbed, and so that's why there was not a full-blown biological assessment done or anything like that in the course of trying to get this urgent work started.
So then...
In hindsight, we realized that the wetlands was right there, and we needed to make sure that they stayed far enough back from the wetlands.
So then, given the urgency of it, why was not the Aoki property chosen, because that was ready to go? And I think the rationale I've read is that it was... we didn't want to impede Chumash Days, and there were a few...
The city didn't force anybody to go anywhere. The city was not... and I can't speak to the whole reason why the city didn't make its own property available, but the Bell property was proximate. I don't know if they investigated the Yamaguchi property or not, but the Edison people found options and chose the one that worked the best for them.
Just for... and I can't tell you where I read this, but I read it someplace, that there were two things that the city used. One was the parking for Chumash Day, and the second thing was they were going to put solar panels on City Hall, so they were...
That's right.
They may have.
Those are the two things I'm aware of.
Those are the two things that I'm.
Yeah. The significant city staff parking was going to have to be relocated.
Okay. Is it accurate that, as Mr. Silverstein wrote, that the application for the CDP was not made within the ninety-eight days of the issuance of the ECDP? So, theoretically, that.
The, Justine can speak to the specifics, but the, my recollection is that they submitted the follow-up CDP application within the ninety days of the original ECDP.
Well, it was the.
They submitted it. It, it wasn't, we reviewed it and continued to work with them on, on the application. It, it, I think he was proposing that it, it.
It needs to be complete.
Wasn't procedurally appropriate, because it wasn't complete, but they submitted the application, and it contained everything that we needed in order to begin the review. So, the application was, when we deem an application complete, that means that, you know, we're about to schedule it for a hearing. So, I think it's two slightly different things.
What about the noticing periods that are required? The thirty-five days before proposed use, thirty-two prior to an event? This was, I guess it was put in under a permitting structure for events, not uses.
I think you're talking about the temporary use permit.
Yeah.
Process.
Yeah.
And that does have certain noticing provisions, and so we initiated those as, as quickly as we could, and so that's why there's a, it's like twenty-four days that Richard can walk you through. But, yes, there is noticing required for temporary use, and we have begun that process.
And my understanding is that this use, this industrial, or at least quasi-industrial use, is not appropriate in the commercial district? Does, or did the emergency status provide some, any sort of legal basis to override the zoning designation? Or how, what's, what's the authority there to say, no, it doesn't matter, we're going to go ahead with it?
It's a construction staging yard, and so the emergency permit allowed for that and, and accounts for the temporary use also. A temporary use doesn't have to be one that's allowed in the zone if it's, if it's short-term in nature.
How is it that the work that was scheduled for first thirty, or I guess forty days, four months, has turned into almost a year?
I think Edison's explained that, as they've been conducting inspections throughout their system, they've identified more work than they initially realized they needed to be done. And if you want more details on that, I think they can tell you. But, I mean, in, in terms of the, the public safety power shut-off, that's been, if anybody remembers, from, I think, last fall, when that was introduced, the city is very, has huge concerns about that. And so, this work is directly related to avoiding those. And that, you know, the, the PSPS happens during a red flag day, and all the power, in a particular part, or perhaps all of the city, could be shut off. And so, it's very important that that be avoided as much as possible. So, that's what all of this is, is aiming for.
So, we've talked a little bit about concrete. I, I'm curious, grading is defined as cut and/or fill, and here we have a fill of gravel and cement, both being products of the earth in some way. And so, I'm curious what the legal definition of grading materials would be, and how is the fill here not considered grading for which a permit would have been required? And I guess, again, I guess it's the emergency status that would allow the grading in the rainy season, even though that's normally not permissible? Was this not grading?
I would say that the definition for grading for public works would be the, the movement of earthwork, but mainly more the displacement of cut or fill.
Which we filled a bunch.
So, from my understanding, with the soil cement, the process basically details, basically the spreading of this cement mixture in with the soil, and it's a, it's a tilling type of methodology, and so it wasn't necessarily the changing of contours along the site. So, grading alone, if you had an elevation of a hundred feet, that elevation of a hundred feet should stay the way it is currently, right now, the way it is.
But we've added how many, however many tons of the gravel on there and effectively raised the contour of the whole site by whatever, six inches.
That was always contemplated to be temporary. So, that's, that's why we didn't look at it as grading. All of the, the site activities were intended to be temporary, and we asked, or not asked, but put requirements in the emergency permits that the site be restored.
Okay. And then, finally, the, or I don't know about finally, but on that particular subject, the, the concrete was unpermitted. That was not in the original, that was a surprise to everybody on this end. And so, from a legal standpoint, how would that even differ from, would that differ from an illegal dumping of building materials? Somebody just coming in and putting concrete on a, on a vacant lot? That's, you don't have a permit for that? What, what's that about?
Yeah. I mean, we, we have concerns about the soil cement that was performed on the site, too. I mean, we have concerns of both hydrology, hydraulic, and the same concerns that the geologists mentioned about potential vegetation regrowth through the site, so.
And a quick one on that, if we do go through a major rainy season, that's still there, and we, the decision is to mitigate that, will that make that cleanup that much more difficult? Like, instead of, say, fourteen inches, you got to go two feet, three feet to get contaminated soil out?
Yeah. That, that's correct. I mean, the, the, the exact methodology isn't fully vetted here. I mean, this is, the concern I have is for the November first rainy season about to hit us. If you left the site the way it is right now, you have a impervious material of the soil cement underlining the, the gravel layer. Now, the gravel layer does act as some sort of a reservoir for sheet flow and the amount of water, but eventually, over time, over the amount of, the cycle of a rain event, it will speed up flows off the site from what it was before compared.
As Mr. Did they do the same thing with the Chili Cook-Off site?
I don't, I don't believe the soil cement was used on the Chili, Chili Cook-Off.
We don't know, though.
No. That, that's a big, that's a big difference here.
But we don't know if they did or they.
I don't believe, I, I personally don't believe they did. I, I, I don't.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of regrowth happening on that site, and there's none on this site.
Yeah. Well, and as, as Mr. Kowalewski said, there's some likelihood that it's going to permeate even further down in with more rain. And I know from my own, you know, this is anecdotal, I guess, but just working with concrete around the yard and then trying to go back and plant something later, that once that gets in there, that's, forget it, nothing's growing there.
Yeah. I mean, the, the vegetation, I'll have to defer to our, our city biologists, but even, even with the breaking of the soil cement and then having SCE perform approved percolation tests and methods, and, and try to compare it to an untouched portion of the site, so we get a good comparison of pre and post. If that still doesn't resolve, we don't get the amount of percolation we see we would want, then there would have to be additional remedies. But that would be barring, it would solve every, every other issue, biologist, vegetation, what else, what else it would be.
So, hypothetically, the, the export that will, would have to happen in the end here could range from a foot to three, four, or five feet. We, I mean, we don't know, right?
So, the, and, right. I mean, that would have to be verified with our inspectors as the process continues to move forward and do percolation tests as the, as the material is removed, and then they, okay, we clear that site, that, that you went to a depth that we agree upon. So, that, that would be.
And a, a quick one that's kind of related before any mitigation's done, we have a slope going from the north to the south, obviously, to the wetlands, so we should expect the wetlands going to fill up with basically some type of, like, cement slash rock residue or something?
Yeah. I'm not quite sure on the actual residue. Maybe the, the biologist could, could speak on what the cement residue would be. I mean, the soil cement itself is used in an application of a, a lot of other geotechnical kind of parking and minor roadways and things that, where you have poor soils and you want to increase the amount of traffic index vehicles that can take the loading before you have issues onsite.
And then there's nothing that would stop? If it did hit water below, it could just go wherever that water table is and could expand, expand to other properties and have impact there as well?
Hypothetically.
But I believe they did, some of the requirements included erosion control measures and, and drainage measures to prevent runoff from leaving the site.
So, in, in any project we do, in typical, this, this is to our conditions and with our inspectors and working with SCE, erosion control devices are implemented, fiber rolls, cell fence, things that make sure that the water quality aspects are.
Yeah.
Controlled, but not necessarily the comparison for hydrology, hydraulics, for pre versus post.
Yeah. I, I just have concerns, again, with that volume. I doubt we could stop everything, and it's probably going to get to other water. This comes to something that Pat Healy brought up, and maybe this is more to Trevor than anything else, but what happens if, for whatever reason, by the time we do get to mitigation, SCE can't pay that bill? What, what happens to the city in that case, for whatever reason?
I think, I mean, SCE is a, I don't think it's a solvency issue.
Well, I mean, the point of having a bond, would that help the city in that, in that sense?
I mean, I don't think it would probably be necessary for Southern California Edison. I mean, they're a public utility, they, they have a ability to basically grab it from the right payers if they need to, to an extent, unless they're teetering on bankruptcy. The landowner would also have, you know, responsibility also for restoring the property.
You know, just for what it's worth, Chris, in, in the license agreement that you drafted up for the Chili Cook-Off property, it said, da-da-da-da, "In the event a licensee fails to do so, the city shall have the option of restoring licensed area at licensee's expense, and any cost incurred by the city in doing so shall constitute a debt of the licensee to the city." So, that, and that's not in any of the documents we've done, but that was done for the Chili Cook-Off, that says, "Look, if you don't pay for it, we're going to come after you." So, I don't know whether, what happens, we'll, something like that. Go ahead.
Directly across from the, the low end of that property is the main storm drain and drain that goes into Legacy Park, which gets processed by the plant in front of Whole Foods. Now, if that's cement runoff, is there any potential of screwing up our five million dollar treatment plant?
Currently, right now, I mean, with erosion control devices in place and the stabilization, when you mix the soil and the cement mixture, it's more of a solidified type material, hands impervious in nature. Since this was all kind of temporary right now, the way we looked at it, now we're kind of looking into now our rainy season for November first coming in, I, I don't want to say no, but there's always ways we can try to eliminate the risk of it utilizing erosion control materials and, and definitely providing that at the inlet down there at the bottom of the site. We could do additional measures and water sampling if needed.
Can I ask for sort of a straw vote, to take everybody's temperature on, in terms of the evidence we've seen regarding wetland status down at the, at the bottom there? Are we heading towards some notion of accepting the various studies that there has been at some point, some small amount of wetland on there or not? Or do, are we, how are we, how are we interpreting the evidence in front of us?
That was actually a question I had before. I think with Justine in your presentations, I think it was slide, slide around slide nine or something, is there some image where we can kind of see kind of what was discussed historically, any, any history of that that could kind of support where your question is?
Well, the question, I mean, we have, we have these letters, Presbyterian letter, the Rincon study, various people saying that there's ESHA and/or there's a wetland on there. And I guess it's my, my, I'm heading towards the question of, if, if we find that there is any amount on there, is then the LIP four-point-eight-point-two-B applicable, where if, if it were called a seasonal wetland, then the restoration to be done is by statute three times the area of what's found there, which would be getting us towards, I don't know, I don't know how, what, how much you'd say is found there, but, you know, getting us towards maybe a third of, or even a half of the site, which then gets us into the ballpark of, one of the options was to say, let's remediate half of it immediately, which saves the problem of, or at least mitigates the problem of any concrete runoff going into the storm drain and that kind of stuff, if we, if we can be cleaning up the bottom half now instead of in December. Wait, you're shaking your head. What is it?
I don't know if cleaning up the bottom stops this other.
Yeah.
Well, it just increases the distance. It increases the distance, at least.
My comment on that is, we also are covered by the LIP and LCP. It's not municipal code. And in eighty-five, they, they delineated the wetlands, and they talk about the thirty-five thousand cubic yards that were piled on that property and what they had to do to fix
And you're talking about they were piled on the Smith property adjacent to the.
No. No, they were piled on this property. It says they were avoiding the Smith property. They wanted to pile it on the Smith property. This is this document nine eighty-five five-two-nine-eight-two. Said they wanted to pile it there, and then they went to the property next door.
Coastal Commission, right?
Coastal Commission. And then part of the, that's the way I read it, and then part of the solution was, yeah, they can do it, but they got to restore it. And then there's some other document in here that shows where it was. That's the way I read it. I mean, I don't know, but it appears that the Coastal Commission already figured out where the wetlands were, at least in eighty-five. Pat provided pictures of it prior to that, and I've seen, in Mario Quizno's office, he used to have a map that showed the whole civic center.
The Coastal Commission permit shows the wetland site of original approximate marshy area. They identify it, it's all on the Smith parcel.
Right. But they didn't allow them to pile thirty-five thousand cubic yards of dirt.
But there's no identification of a wetland on the Bell property by this report, is what I'm saying.
Well, I read it here somewhere. Give me a while, and I'll find it.
Let me. Am I? I can't understand what difference it makes in terms of whether we order the immediate remediation of the lower half of the property. We have the ability to do that anyway, and by the terms of the emergency permit, we can simply condition the, the follow-on permit to require that. It doesn't matter if it's wetland, it doesn't matter if it's, it doesn't matter what it is. And we are not in the business of freewheeling determinations of what is and what is not ESHA. We just, that's not something we do, except in the context of, of a particular application. In this case, I just don't understand how it's relevant, how it adds to the inquiry, because we can do it anyway.
Well, the only.
It's interaction with the rainy season.
The only.
Can do it anyway. We could say, we can't, we can't say you have to remediate it yesterday, but we can say you have to remediate it tomorrow. And, and to the extent that that avoids a problem with the rainy season, it, it will or will not, depending on when the rains start to come. But we can't back it up any further than that, and we have the power to do it starting tomorrow, if we want to start it tomorrow.
I, I, if we're taking a straw vote, I'd prefer to have them do their job. I think whatever leaching we get, we're going to get anyway. And that they should use the whole site.
Okay.
Finish their job, get it done as soon as they can, and get over with it.
That, and that is a relevant question, because one of the things that we can decide is, do we want to remediate half the site as, as proposed by staff? And as apparently resisted by Southern California Edison, they would rather use the whole job and feel that it's going to constrict them if they have to move it down to half. So, that's, that's a decision we really get to make.
And just for what, I mean, when we did the walkthrough of the yard down there, it's one of the main questions we asked. Okay? If we have to cut this yard in half, will that have an impact of potentially delaying your ability to get this thing done as quickly as possible? And they said, yes, it will, because you're going to be taking resources that should be out in the road, looking at poles, and having to move stuff all over the place. So, I think there is, you know, if our, if our goal says there's a fire season coming up, and we want to make sure the city has done everything they can to make the place safe as soon as possible with that upcoming fire season, I think the thing says, let's not screw around with what they're doing, let them finish their job.
I would suggest to you, then, that maybe if taking a straw poll, a straw vote on, on whether there's a support for remediation beginning immediately on the lower half of the property, or whether you're inclined to wait for the, for months to the end of the year, or whenever they get out, that would be a, a relevant decisions we could make.
Let me ask one more question of, of Richard. When we, we met with you, you said you thought you had a plant, Robert, I mean, I'm sorry, I get, I'm getting old, that you, you thought you would be done sometime by the end of October. Is that, is that a legitimate timeframe?
In my office right now, I have a schedule that puts us completed with a project mid to the third week of October.
Okay.
And we are, had a schedule at the moment.
As you pointed out, that maybe thirty-five percent of the work in, in areas might be served just as quickly or efficiently from Thousand Oaks? Does that change the calc, could you say, oh, yeah, okay, let's do more of it from Thousand Oaks, so we can live with a smaller yard between now and then?
Why do we want a smaller yard?
If we, start the remediation, and also, one. If we're, start the remediation, and also, one concern about the remediation, we've, we've got to do some studies on how much needs to be taken out. And, um, it may turn out that if you need to dig it four feet deep, say, how many truckloads of stuff is that going out on the highway and in Malibu? And, you know, when we looked at this in the first instance and they said, oh, this is gonna be more convenient to do in Malibu, and there'll be fewer trucks on the road coming and going, they didn't count all the trucks coming and going of the gravel and everything that's been put in there. So, on balance, it's probably been more inconvenient for the city, but this, I mean, that's water under the bridge. This is the way that we're doing it now.
Now, let's do a straw vote.
I'd just like to comment first, though. I've, I've been doing, Jeff and I have been doing this a long time, and I've never seen a biological study to remediate and get it all done in two weeks.
Right.
I've never seen it done in six months. So, I'm not planning on bulldozers remediating in November.
And, and just the, the.
Let me, let me.
The initial question, though, would be, how deep do you have to dig it out?
Let me follow up on John's, John's point, I think, is, is the key, that we, right now, I don't have a remediation plan. I don't have one. I don't know what it's gonna take, I don't know how much, who's gonna monitor it, I don't, I don't want any, any of that stuff. What timeframes are gonna be there, somebody's gotta do that. And like I said, I think what we owe the residents of Malibu is a plan that brings that property back as close as we can, because that's what they wanted, right? So, I want to go to Jeff's question.
Well, the, and, and if there is a straw vote, and if the, the vote is to allow Edison to stay on the property until they finish their work or until the end of the year, whichever comes first, then the question then becomes, if, if that's the direction of the, of the commission, then the direction becomes, how do we do that? How do we, how do, how do we obtain that remediation plan and incorporate it into whatever approval we're going to be making here? One way to do it, which I'm sure is not going to be received with great applause, is to say that it is to be done and up to the approval of the, of the, um, the, the planning director, that the planning director in Public Works would approve the remediation plan. I have a feeling you're gonna want to somehow have the remediation plan come back in front of this body, although I don't see that we have any particular expertise to handle that, with, that the expertise is supposed to be in staff. They're supposed to ones, you know, to, to be able to make the determination of whether the remediation plan is adequate or not. But those are, those are at least two possible options.
You read my, you read my mind.
Let me add one more possible option. We do have a professional scientific review body, ERB, and they're capable of doing things like that.
All right, so let's do, let's do a straw vote. And, and first, the vote says, do we want Edison off the property by the end of August? Or we're willing to let them go potentially till the end of October to get their job done?
I, I got, I have one question for SE, just help me make that decision, if you don't mind?
Go right ahead.
Um, maybe Rudy or whoever's best to address this, but just from your, by, the work that'll be done by, say, mid or late October, what, what would, how would you state, what's the improvement we'll have from there, here to there? Like, will you have a completely eliminated risk of PSPS? Or, you know, how would you best quantify that for some insight?
I, I wish I could tell you that, um, the work that we're gonna complete, uh, complete will eliminate the possibility of PSPS. But, I mean, that's something that we have no control over, it, those, those are gonna be weather conditions at any point in time.
I'm asking for your opinion, how would you best phrase what you expect would be your goal at, you know?
Well, our, our goal is to minimize the possibility of having to implement PSPS. And again, through the cover conductor work and, and the other, you know, hardening of our system that we're, that we're completing, um, that will achieve that goal.
And, and beyond reducing costs, this also just speeds it up. If, if you had to speculate, I don't know that you could, but if you weren't on this site, how much longer might it take to complete this work?
That's, I'm gonna refer to our operations staff.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Brian Vegas, I'm the site manager for the, the lay-down yard, uh, I work with Robert. The basic stuff that can happen is, while we're here, we're, we're trying to mitigate wildfires, that's why we're here. Safety of the community, safety of, of, of just everybody around, and the, the, the time that it's gonna take for us to travel, and it, and it wouldn't be from Thousand Oaks, it would be from Moore Park. Would be, and we've, we've gone all over the place looking for other places where we could have temporary lay-down yards. We've, we've, I believe me, I've driven around, I've, I've looked, corporate real estates looked. We are doing our best, like, we can to, to abide by the, the, the temporary permit that we had. And if we had to move, to try to find somewhere else, it's just that it's very, very difficult to find someplace in the time that we need to, to do it.
And just to restate, Brian, so if you were limited to just work out of the Moore, Moore Park facility, would it, like, push you out to next October, like a full year out or a couple of months with Moore Park?
It would, it would take us through the holiday season into, into the beginning of next year, probably.
Okay, so we'd add four to six months, you would estimate minimum?
You know, with, with the way that this work is coming to us also, it, it, the reason that we're in Malibu right now is because we have a very large bubble of work that happened in July, and it's happening again in September, because of the way and the process that was done for the inspections that were given. These are off-cycle inspections to mitigate wildfire. So, that is why we, we have such a big bubble of work and why back in March and April, our numbers were off.
And, and for the, the inspections you've now completed, confidence level, I mean, you've got your plan, you don't expect any more surprises where it's gonna?
No, no, we don't, no, we, we, we went through all of our inspections, and then we had, we had a different rank or a different severity of, of poles and of structures that were in higher fire areas. So, what happens is, this group, let's just say, West Malibu is the higher fire area, just for example's sake. And then as we move through West Malibu, we get to center and then the East Malibu, they all come in different times, because of the way that they were inspected. So, the work comes to us the way that it was inspected, if it can be planned and develop, and designed correctly, permit issues and all, everything that we still have to deal with. So, right now, our biggest bubble was in July, and now again, we're expecting that in September. Because just purely from dates and the stats of how everything has, has come across.
Can I, can I ask, so we don't. You said, I think, somebody said you had fifteen thousand things to do and you'd done three, is that right?
They had fifteen thousand inspections, three thousand repair, maintenance and upgrades.
We've done fifteen thousand inspection, we found three thousand fixes.
And of the, of the three thousand, how many have you completed?
I honestly, I don't have that number in front of me.
It's my opinion, they're, they're gonna be done when they're done, they're not hanging around playing poker in the shack. And, uh, you know, I, I don't really care what our end date is, as long as they can be done by that date.
Okay, so it sounds like we're moving in the direction that says, let them stay on the lot until they finish, is that a?
Yes.
Everybody agrees with that?
Is that till they finish or finish or end of the year, which was staff's recommendation? Do you want to put any kind of hard end date?
Let's ask you. Now, what chance do you think at, at December 31st, you're still gonna be hanging out?
We, we will not be there December 31st.
Okay.
Okay, so he, and here's just one thing, I did want to let you guys know, is these bubbles of work that comes through is why the lay-down yard is such a big part of what we do. The work is not gonna be over, ever. So, the normal, back to normal Edison business is what we are shooting for. And that, it will be done by the end of October.
Okay, so, okay, so the idea will be end of the year is a hard termination or when they finish the work, whichever comes sooner?
Sooner, correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's probably what everyone agree?
That's, we've, we've got a consensus, I think we've got a consensus on that.
Right, so now we need to talk about remediation or whether.
My suggestion, just hang on, my suggestion of remediation is that we set, and I don't know what the timeframe is, thirty days, forty-five days?
I'd like to ask Dave.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna get there, but I, the, the plan is, I would like to see them come back with a detailed remediation plan that identifies methods, timeframes, whose supervision, whatever that process is, so everybody knows and can look at it and say, yeah, we, you know, that's gonna get us to what we want, which is a property back as close as we can to when it was started. And I, and Jeff is right, I'd like to see that come back to the planning commission so we can at least get a look at it.
Chair, you're, there'd be an issue with bringing it back to the commission in terms of, you have to issue the complete CDP, you can't issue it in part. So, a couple of options that you could have would be, number one, you could require as part of the, of the CDP that they create this restoration plan and publish it, um, this is a certain date or time, maybe related to when they're completing their work, publish it to the public and allow a period of time for the civic comments to staff, and then the, the, the process would then be, the plan would be as approved by staff, but everyone would have a chance to be able to submit that.
Can it go to the ERB?
Yeah, in that room.
I, I don't, I don't think that's.
What happened, what would happen if we issued the CDP and the remediation was dig down forty feet and haul out a hundred thousand truckloads? And nobody got to review that?
Well, that's, that's why there would be, we're, we're, what we were discussing a minute ago was having some way a pub- for a public input and public review. The, the whole, um, idea is to be transparent about this, so that's been the case this whole time, but the, for this part too, because I know there's concerns.
We just told a restaurant, in five years, we're gonna go look at you and see if you're doing it right. Why can't we put in our CDP?
Well, you can have a condition for a follow-up review.
That's a review, but what you put in, which is for the CUP, is you'll get a review, and if you get a bad report, then you would move into revocation proceedings for the CUP, and this is.
Can we get a review of the C, of the restoration plan? What's that, is that any different than a review of operations?
Because what, I think what you're asking for is that you would approve the, the restoration plan, and that would be, you wouldn't be making a decision tonight on what the restoration plan is.
If it's open to public, public comment, then we, as commissioners, can make our own comment on it anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm not so, I'm not as much tied down, look, I don't, I think Jeff's got a point, that none of us up here are biologists, okay? Or remedial, whatever the right term is for people who remediate stuff. But I, I do think that we want to have a, a look at this, and, and so that, you know, again, so we walk away saying, yeah, we think, you know, whoever's done this has thought about all the pieces they, they gotta think about, so.
How about this, how about this, we, we require our remediation plan to be prepared and submitted within X days, pick a number. Staff then presents a report to us, we have a public hearing, take public comment on it, we can do it. But, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't have to end up in, with anything being formal, we can just have public comment, we say, you know, this is the report, this is, this is the way it is, uh, we don't get to, to shape it, but at least it gives, it, it creates a forum where people could come and talk about it and complain about it, how we didn't do it right.
Well, let me ask one other thing then. Can we specify that the quality of the remediation? Can we say, for example, uh, if it was a stream, the water quality has to be X parts per million? Or in this case, the dirt has to have no more than one, whatever it is, a cement in it?
Yeah, you could, you can impose conditions, you can say a restoration plan that conforms with the following requirements.
That's what I'd like to do then, because what we have now is, apparently, and I haven't asked Dave what he did, was our biologist walked across the field after they graded it. That's basically, I think, what we have. And, uh, that wouldn't cut it with me if, you know, our remediation plan, if somebody walked across and said, it looks nice.
Let me, let me ask a creative, propose a creative thought, what if we issue the C, uh, CDP, what, like we're talking about, but then have a TUP, which would be specifically for the work to remediate? So, they have to do it in thirty days or something, and that has to be heard then back here?
The, the TUP is to allow a use, not for a, a cleanup situation.
Well, call it a use.
So.
Use is cleaning up, I don't know, I mean, just something so it can be actually heard in a more formal setting.
I think the, the other, the other, the, the other option, if you want to have this to come back to the planning commission, would be require them to, um, obtain a, a CDP for the removal of this, uh, data in the future. The downside to that is that it can lead to delay.
I like, I like Jeff's ide- I like Jeff's idea that sort of said, okay, when they bring it back, we'll tell the public hearing, give everybody a chance to, because look, the, the reason we're doing this is so the people out there are gonna get what they want, and they should have a say in making sure that we're, we're doing what they want.
We can't.
Sure you can't, you.
We're gonna listen to something.
Okay.
And we can't change it.
Right.
We do that all the time, we get reports from, from staff.
We get reports and they say, that's a blue building, sure it's a blue building, we want a green, you can't do that. So, I'd like to ask Dave some questions.
Go ahead.
I understand you didn't get much time to look at this when it happened. So, we don't have a very good baseline. But the way I remember the property is it, it grew, it supposedly at one time was quoted to have the best dirt in California, because they used it for fifty years growing flowers and dumping stuff on it. So, it was decent dirt. Now, we've got cement and cement and sand, or cement and dirt. What I'm asking is, what parameters should we put on a remediation that would get it back as close as it can be to the way it was? Do we, do we say it has to have a certain pH? Did, do we say it has to be some certain ti- type of soil? Do we say it cannot have cement in it? So, we get some idea of what the remediation plan is gonna come back as? Because as far as I'm concerned, you could come back in and say, dump more dirt on it and stir it around some more, and it'll be, it'll be, uh, diluted, you know, which I wouldn't go for. Can you give us some idea of what we should put in as parameters?
All I can really tell you, I, I do not profess to be a soil scientist or chemist, and that's where a lot of this comes in. I have had a fair amount of experience with, um, projects that utilize soil cement. That purpose was primarily, they use it as buried bank stabilization, where they would cut back behind the bank of a river, put a slope in the soil cement, put the natural soil back on. So, in the future, should storm events or whatever erode away the loose soil, the soil cement would stop further erosion. So, to me, that means.
Lots of cement.
Some level of impermeability. So, I think the big, and one of the reasons I use the soil cement was because it was not particularly toxic. So, um, it didn't kill animals that came into contact with it. Because of impermeability, it wouldn't grow plants, but it didn't necessarily kill plants that came into contact with it. So, I, my own opinion would be that the parameters would primarily be associated with permeability.
And, um, what about, I'm sure we're gonna want to say native plants should be able to come back? Or plants in that ecosystem, um, for raptors and for gophers or whatever? Because, you know, people talk about this being a shopping center someday, but forty percent of it is gonna be open space. So, is there certain terms we can use to say it has to be suitable for natural plants or for X type of plants or to grow in? Can you turn on your thing?
Your microphone?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Um, to some degree, yes, I discussed this with Bonnie. I think it's fine to say we want to put native plants back in. Based on my experience of being in here for many, many years, is that, and most of you have already expressed it, that you've seen, it's been an active agricultural field, it's, it's never been pristine native habitat. So, I don't think it's appropriate to require a property owner to put in ESHA style, ESHA-type habitat where there never was before, which then further restricts the use of their property, because, um, I guess it becomes more of a legal issue than a bio issue. But, um, I think it is appropriate to say, you can't throw a bunch of mustard seed down there, make it all mustard. You can put native plants in there, you can put, uh, low-water-use plants in there, non-invasive plants in there. But my concern would be, um, trying to call it an ESHA.
Dave, isn't, isn't it, I mean, it's been years since they were planting flowers there, right? And so every, all subsequent years, as I'd watch this, you know, somebody tells it, okay, to keep the, and it appears that over time, it has started to revert back to what it was in the beginning, which was ESHA. That, right, now, I don't know how much of that is, was there, but this thing being left alone and not having anything done to it for years was going back to where it came from.
The, the twenty-twelve, um, biological report on the property doesn't really indicate that, it didn't identify anything native. It all, it found non-native grasslands and, and.
Well, the, the old, the old picture's nineteen-hundred, it was, is basically a swamp. I, I don't care, well, I don't want to turn it into ESHA and cause the landowner to have a problem. I just want to have plants be able to grow there. You know, if they cleaned it up and it was too acidic and, I, I guess all you could grow is salt grass, uh, it wouldn't be cool.
Let me, can I make a, try and craft a, a motion, see if it goes anywhere? My motion would be to, uh, deny the conditional use. My motion would be to deny the conditional use permit to grant the staff recommendation for the granting of a, where were we, temporary use permit?
CDP and a TUP.
With the following conditions, that the applicant is to produce a detailed plan of restoration, the goal of which is to restore the property to its condition prior to the issuance of the emergency CDP, and that the restoration plan is to be published on the city's website for a period of thirty days for a public comment period. Public comments are to be addressed by SCE and by staff, and and I'm going to stop there. I was, I was going to go on with the idea of having a, and the report to be presented to the planning commission at an early, the earliest available planning commission date after that.
A friendly amendment would be to have that plan drafted by some independent party, TBD, I mean, if it's coming from the applicant.
These are the independent parties, these are the people we pay to make the determination.
Determination, but the plan itself is what is concerned about.
Can I second with a friendly amendment?
I'd like to have.
Can I, can I clarify? Commissioner Jennings, I believe your intention was that it would be restored to its condition prior to the ECDP, to the satisfaction of the planning director?
No.
No. Yeah, that would have to be, that has to be it.
You have to have the decision maker.
Because there isn't any other way for us to review it and say yea or nay about it.
Well, there is another way, hire an independent restoration person who does it, and have them.
Well, they, they get paid by somebody, and that's what they run them for. Now, what is the function of the ERB? We get all kinds of things that they review, and, and it's a city thing, and they just review it, make suggestions, they don't pass any laws, they don't give any permits.
The ERB is appointed by the planning director and advises the planning director and makes recommendations to the planning commission on projects that fall within their purview.
And this falls within our purview?
Within their purview. This, right now, this.
And I've seen the ERB review restorations, I mean, they don't have to pass it, they could just say.
It happens prior to the approval of a, of a permit, that's the problem.
If you look at the people in the ERB, you've got Suzanne Good. If you look at the ERB, there's Suzanne Good, who is biologist for the state. I don't know who the other, there's Brene Wasserman, who's a architect.
They each have an expertise.
There's a geologist, there's a, there's an architect, there's a landscape designer, and there's a fire department fuel mod specialist.
And two of them know, plants grow and they don't grow in this kind of soil. My only question is, Bonnie, you get handed a staff report they pay for that says, here's your restoration plan. What do you know about changing that if it's wrong?
Well, we, we get input from people that we would need on that. Like Dave said, none of us on staff are soil specialists, so we would, we may have to look for somebody to give us input on that. Like a contract firm that we already have under contract for some other purpose, we could.
Okay, there is, there is another possibility, we do this in regard to an EIR. We require that the applicant basically pay for the preparation of the report by a consultant selected by the city, right? The city selects the consultant who makes the report, applicant has to pay for it. That's the EIR model, right?
Time for that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Time for that.
And then we, then we get, we get a.
Well, to be clear, it wouldn't be to an EIR, you're asking for an EIR consultant to propose the restoration plan.
He's just asking for a private consultant to prepare a restoration plan at the applicant's expense.
That, exactly, that, that, that staff would cause, yeah, what you said.
Okay, David, we could ask you a question. This consultant comes back, and he says, okay, you got to remove two feet and replace it with this kind of dirt, okay? The dirt you have is no good, it's got cement in it, okay? Do we have to authorize the forty thousand truckloads or whatever it is? Or that just gets, that just gets thrown in with the restoration plan?
Well, the, the structure of what you're setting up here is that ultimately, it would be a plan that would be approved to the satisfaction of the planning director, that it restores the site to its condition prior to the ECDP, and you're requiring an independent consultant to propose that plan to the planning director.
Right, but normally in an EIR, where these things are presented, you got a traffic guy that says you're going to create fifty thousand tons of carbon and.
But we're not creating an EIR here, we're just using an EIR type consultant.
You're creating the situation of an EIR.
So what do you want to do?
If the proposed restoration plan.
Sometimes you got to reduce, you got to relieve a little bit of control, you got to, you got to just let it go a little bit.
Yeah, they would be constrained, because if the restoration plan would not be able to, it would need its own environment, if it needs further environmental review based on what's proposed, then further environmental review would need to be done. If it's not exempt, I would imagine whatever's proposed, you would need either be exempt or subject to a negative deck, otherwise we're going to come back here for approval of an EIR.
It's, it would be typical for a project involving truck trips to include a construction management plan that would address truck trips and, you know, construction noise and those types of things.
So our, what we're voting on would be for a remediation plan including all ancillary requirements. You may have to, you may have to hire a trip planner guy or something.
Yeah, maybe, okay.
Friendly amendment, we were talking about restoring everything to the state prior to the ECDP. I would, I would alter that to say, the top half of the lot, yes, that. Bottom half of the lot, we know there's substantial evidence that there was some degree of wetland in the bottom, and by LIP four eight two B for CDPs with disturbed degraded wetland habitat, the remediation called for is three to one what was there. If we assume that what was there was even a small bit, then three times that is a fair chunk, it's maybe a third of the lot, or maybe even.
No, maybe smaller than that.
Well, if you, if we said remediate two-thirds of the lot to prior condition, and the bottom third of it to something that does contain more in the nature of wetland plants or, and or ESHA or something a little more.
The detail be addressed in the study, I guess.
Well, we have. To be addressed in the study, yeah.
We could reference it, because we have the coastal commission's report, which required a remediation on that property back in eighty-five, which apparently was never done. And it's, Bonnie, it's on page four, paragraph A and B. First paragraph says they, they were going to put it on the lot, then the second paragraph says, no, we wouldn't let them, and third paragraph says, put it east of Webb Way, which is where we're talking, north of Smith property.
They ended up putting it on the Legacy Park property, I believe.
It says east of Webb Way, somewhere in here.
I'd be careful in requiring them to turn their land into wetland too, in terms of running into a taking issue.
Yeah, you've really got a real problem there. It's one thing to require somebody to remediate what they've done, it's another thing to say, oh yeah, while you're doing it, we'd like you to make this nice thing.
What I'm saying, they've already been ordered to do that.
Oh, that, I, I think you're mistaken, and I can't read this all this quickly as you're all talking, and I'm trying to listen and read, but the restoration was required to be on the Smith property, not on the Bell property.
If you're requiring something beyond restoring it to its, what it was before, its condition before the ECDP, then it might be wiser to require a removal CDP.
Dave, is there a way to find out, is there a test you can do to determine if it's a wetland or not? Is there something that we can put in there that says, look, I mean, we've had a whole bunch of different opinions, it does appear that, you know, during the rainy season, it was wet, but again, I don't want to take Bell's property away from them for, but is there a test you can do that, you know, we can plant wetland plants in there and see if they grow for the next couple of years, and that will determine if it's a wetland or not? How can we do that without?
There, there is a process dictated by federal US Army Corps of Engineers, by regional water quality control board, by California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Their biologist has already done it, they've already produced the information. If there's some question as to their integrity or ability to do that, you can hire another independent company to go out there that are wetland specialists. There are very specific parameters to determine a wetland, it's not, I know there's water down there sometimes. They have to have hydrolic soils that are created over a period of many years, they have to have wetland plants that only grow in wetlands, they have to have the hydrology that, that allows for the water to go there repeatedly, assuming you don't have ten years of drought. Like I say, it's been done, it was done before for the, when MBC was doing all their EIR, it was done in significant detail then, and I am relatively certain that the city's LCP, or the city's LCP ESHA map that shows the boundaries of the wetland came from that study, where it shows it only on the Smith property and set back somewhat from the boundary. If you do not have wetland conditions, all the wetland conditions, the hydrology in the soil, you can plant wetland plants there all day long, and they're going to die. And if you just put in the soil, if you don't have the hydrology, it's not going to become a wetland. I mean, you can create wetlands if you have a, a source of water to put into it, but.
I'm not trying to create anything, I'm just trying to make sure that when we get done with this thing, we've done the right thing.
Can we hear from Pat? I think you had some comment on this.
I mean, I think slow growth has presented evidence that since nineteen thirty-eight, this, this area has flooded in rainy seasons, and it, the, the LCP, which is, which guides your decision, should be able to do a wetlands delineation and, and somebody do a restoration project on it if it's found to be a wetland. Now, as I see it, what happened when Edison filled it in, they destroyed all the evidence of the hydrolic soil, but photographic evidence that we presented shows over the years the mottled discolored soil on that area, which is evidence of a wetland. Also, there's willows on that property, and we also showed you a photograph of sedge, and one of the studies says mule fat was on the property. Those are all wetland indicator plants. So I think beyond a reasonable doubt, there is a seasonal wetland on that site, and what the, what Edison did is they filled in the wetland, and it's the exact same circumstances that happened on Smith. The Malibu Bay Company graded in that wetland and filled it. The coastal commission said, it is a wetland, you've got to restore it to a marsh. And, and I don't know if it's a marsh or what it is, but I was assumed since they're all, that whole area was once a floodplain of Malibu Creek, and was always flooded in rainy seasons before development. The, the Smith Coastal Commission report says that that is still a wetland even when the roads came in, and I think the same situation applies to Bell. There is definitely a wetland on that project, as I think John just mentioned, or somebody mentioned, that, I don't want to penalize Mr. Bell, but it seems to me that he's got to keep forty percent of his land as natural open space, and if there is a wetland restored on that property, it'll be an asset to his property, one, Edison will be paying for it, save him for paying for it, and also, it'll be a visual, a beautiful thing, and he can design part of his complex to overlook the wetland, you know, and people can sit out on the deck and have, have, there's coffees and whatever else, so I think it's a benefit to everybody, so that's my thought.
Thanks, Pat.
Uh, John, can I, Tom would like to speak, and I'd like to ask him to speak.
We'd like to also comment, too.
Sure.
I understand the difficulty you have of trying to decide what's going to be done. Well, I want to help you out by saying, the Soil Conservation Service prepared a very detailed report called The Soils of Malibu, and they broke it down into sections throughout Malibu, and they tested down several feet deep, probably three to five feet deep, showing the grain size, the clay content, the silk content, the sand content, basically the qualities and what they were good for. That report was prepared in the sixties, I believe, so you have a database that you could say, we want it restored to what was already established by the US Geological, I mean, by the Soil, US Soil Conservation Service. You could just simply state that, and then in their preparation of their restoration plan, they would have to use that as their database. Now, I thought of bringing it up, because you probably didn't know that that very detailed report was already available.
Very good idea, yeah.
Now, Jeff, do you have any objection to using that as a standard? The soils, or, Dave, is the soils conservation standard for that particular lot, if they have it in this book?
The soil survey definitely is very active, or very accurate, and is used for a lot of different purposes in the sixties. I don't think you can legally, I know through Sequoie you can't, make somebody bring something back to sixty or seventy years ago. I've worked on a lot of environmental projects where you have to do a point in time assessment right when you're getting ready to do the project. You can't make them mitigate back to something that was fifty or sixty years ago.
Well, let me ask you this, how would the soils have changed from the sixties if nothing was ever built on that property?
Fifty years of tilling and fertilizing and planting plants and that sort of thing.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it changes the baseline, the baseline still has to be the condition as it was prior to the, the activity beginning. The soils report can certainly be used as a datum point of what, to show what in fact was there, but that would be for the, for the, whatever consultant you hire to use and say, yeah, we're going to look at this, and we're going to look at that, and we're going to, we're going to make conclusions based upon that evidence. But it wouldn't be appropriate to, to change the restoration point.
Can we hear from, from Patterson here? Yeah, you wanted to comment?
Oh.
So the soils report, which has been referenced here, is also referenced in our jurisdictional determination. And as has been pointed out, soils change over time, especially sites that are actively managed. We dug physical soil pits, there are data sheets in the jurisdictional determination that shows what the soils are at different depths, and the soils did not come out to be hydrolic. And when we looked for hydrophytic vegetation, so it's hydrology, vegetation, and soils, those are the three components that make something a wetland based on the core standards, the state standards, regional board standards, and those things were absent, and that is the information that's in our report, and I think that's why Dave and the planning department are asserting that the site wasn't a wetland when the work started.
No, I think you misunderstand what we're talking about, in this case, we're talking about the whole property, how do we get it back to where it was?
No, no.
And this is a data point, and I assume that anybody who would do a study, if you did it, they'd know about that book, but I guess Bonnie should tell them about it.
Okay, so let me, let's just, let's go back. What do we want to do about the wetland guys? Or the potential wetland, do we want to have somebody go back and do another test and just reconfirm what he found to make sure?
I would say the, no, he's got data, I, I think what you want to do is have the restoration study determine what needs to be restored and whether a wetland needs to be restored.
Okay, if, if we just leave it at that right now, there's no definition that there's a wetland there.
No, they, they have to find out if there's a wetland.
That's, that.
That's their job.
So that would be part of the restoration, so, okay.
That would be part of the plan.
Okay.
Is that clear?
It comes, well, it comes back to what Commissioner Hill is saying, what, what does the LCP say specifically, which section says that, because I mean, that, that is a language we should follow if it's determined to be wetland by this study.
Well, I mean, you can, you can also have your resolution reflect that the restoration plan has to, I mean, has to comply with the LCP anyways, but I think you can do that by reference.
Okay, let's do that by reference.
LIP four point eight point two B. Well, now you're asking me to read.
And, and we would like to include recent data studies by SCE and, and soils.
Well, I think the consultant, what I would envision is that the consultant would use all available data and resources, regardless of who it comes from, to prepare this restoration plan. Look at all the evidence that we have on file and that the applicant or anybody else provides.
Okay, I, I just have never heard of that study, so hopefully he's a local guy.
So it sounds like the plan is that we will let. So it sounds like the plan is that we will let Southern California Edison stay on the property until the end of the year or when, or when the job is completed, whichever comes first. We will require that Southern California Edison hire, working with the city, hire a restoration expert, okay? Who will come up with a plan in terms, to bring this property back to what it was prior to the issuance of the first emergency permit, okay? And that, that restoration process will also go through steps to consider, to make sure that we understand whether there is or is not a wetland there. So we'll get, make sure we get that answer out of it, okay? Anything else?
And to address the remediation of wetlands per Section 4A2.
If, 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 if wetlands found, right. Okay, so the restoration process, when completed, will be consistent with the LCP.
Right, right.
Okay?
Do you still want the, the report and the, and the hearing before the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, can I take a stab at the language?
Can I, can I add one quick thing? The fencing to it right now is not to spec right now. And if there's going to be fencing left on beyond the end of October or whenever we're cut off date, it's, it's all going to go away? Because if there's going to be any fencing remaining, it should be wildlife permeable.
I would say that it's got to go away.
Yeah, when, when they finish, it's got to go.
I have a question about that. I didn't want to address it because it muddies the water a little, so to speak, a little bit. But Bonnie, I take it that the authority that the city claims to require the removal of the fencing is because that was one of the conditions of the original emergency CDP? Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
Because otherwise, as, as the attorney for Mr. Bell points out, you can put a fence around your property.
Oh, you can't.
We typically process a permit.
It's, it's, it's permeable.
Indeed, indeed, yeah, but you need a permit.
We would process it over the kind of permit for a fence.
I'm sorry?
Do you need to have a use or a structure?
Well, if it's, if someone is trying to secure their property for some reason, then that's not unusual.
But they do need a permit and they do need to follow the LCP rules.
All right, we got, I would, let me give Bruce one last chance to say something and then we're going to vote.
Thank you very much, Chairman Yurin. So there's a lot of discussion about what can legally be done, what can't legally be done. I haven't heard any discussion about whether this commission can legally make the findings that are required lawfully to grant these permits. Not practicality, not, not anecdotal determinations of whether there's an emergency, which does not legally override any of these finding requirements. You didn't get an answer on that question. It's been asked a number of times, but there's no legal override to these lawful requirements that are not satisfied here just because you want to keep them here, which I agree, I actually want to have them do the work, too. You can deny the permits because they're not lawfully supported. Don't grant them. And then take it from there. Because you heard already from Mr. Bell, he doesn't want to change his property. He's, you've not heard the last of that, okay? Whatever, if you grant these permits, you're laying a foundation for everything that was done is hunky dory. And then it's going to be all the more difficult for you or anyone else to lawfully compel a proper restoration, whatever that might mean. Whatever you say tonight, if you grant these permits, you're going to then get all kinds of bureaucracy and godly gook and double talk, which is all you get from the city, about why what is done already is okay and why whatever restoration they want to do is going to be sufficient. But you need to make lawful findings. You can't just want to allow this. And if you deny the permits, you can't, you don't have to force them to leave, but they won't be here lawfully, just like they really have been here lawfully for the last six months. Let them get their work done, don't force them to leave, but then use the indemnity that they've given you and the indemnity that they've given Mr. Bell as well, by the way. So if there ends up being an argument that there's a taking, SCE is on the hook for the expense. But you're getting a lot of, there's a lot of legal thoughts and speculation without any really drilling down as to what is the law and what's required. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor?
Okay, I'm going to take a stab at.
If we were to do what he just said, is that possible?
If you deny all the, if you deny all the permits, then they're not allowed to use the property.
We can't, we can't.
And then, and then ECDP would have to be restored to its prior condition.
So if we don't do the, we can't just say, we're, we can't do the findings for the CDP, but because it's an emergency, a health and safety issue, we want to leave them on the property until they finish? Can't do that?
The planning commission doesn't issue an ECDP. ECDP would be issued by the planning, by the, the planning director. And that's not what was noticed here tonight in any case. You know, what's before you is the follow-up CDP and their proposed CUP and TUP.
Okay.
Well, let me ask you this.
One second. That comes back to the original question, which was, is an option to just deny the CDP? And at that, initially, when I first asked that, I think he said, yes, we could, but now you're saying, no, we couldn't? CDP or CUP? The CDP. Could, you know, could. If you deny the CDP, that requires that the site be restored because the ECDP said it has to be restored to its prior condition unless it's going to be superseded by this CDP. So if you deny the CDP, then they need to remove everything and, and take it all off by the 24th?
Yeah, but we have, we're in the same city where our city attorney said Airbnbs are illegal, but we're not going to enforce anything until we bring it back someday. Okay? Now, what's compelling you to enforce this by?
I don't recall that, but.
Oh, that's, I can quote her on that one. I got, got it on tape. But there's, well, let's put it this way, we have probably 50 CUPs that have never been issued, that are required 25 years ago. So if we deny the CDP, is the city staff actually going to throw them off that lot?
That's what's required by the.
That doesn't mean they're going to do it. I mean, there's a lot of things that are required. You're supposed to have a sign law that's followed, you know, things like that.
I mean, there are issues, there are issues dealing with the findings for the CDP. I mean, there are, you know, the things that say it's least environmentally damaging, the fact it says it's, you know, that it doesn't destroy the visual in, I mean, so, you know, those, those are not correct.
Yeah, I can list right off. I have six different findings that we can't meet.
You know, I would love to find a way.
What are you talking about for the ECDP? Because if you can't make the findings for the CDP tonight, you cannot approve it. So let's be clear what, what the commission's doing here.
A couple of them are for the CDP. Some of them were for the ECDP, you're right.
If, if you can't make the findings, there's not substantial evidence in the record here to support your findings.
What's the CDP one?
CDP, the use proposed by the applicant is consistent with the applicable zoning. No, it's industrial, not commercial.
Can you call out which page of the report you're looking at?
I can't because I just took that into my own notes.
Maybe staff can respond to that.
Finding two.
Because all the, there's evidence in the staff report to support all of them.
Right, the staff report lays out findings which we hope you agree with them. If you don't, then that's up to you. But we've laid out a basis for approval of the, of the CDP and the TUP. The temporary use permit addresses the temporary use that would not otherwise be allowed in the zone. That's how that works.
Okay, but then for the CDP, also finding four, environmental review board recommendations to which the project must conform are required if the project is located in or adjacent to an environmentally sensitive habitat area. We're adjacent to Smith.
And it's mapped.
And it's mapped. And so we, they're saying we need ERB recommendations.
It's even, you know, look, the LIP says it's supposed to be a temporary use event, not a temporary use. So I believe the LIP prevents you from doing what? Look, I'm trying.
Finding, finding one, the project as proposed will have no significant adverse scenic or visual impacts due to project design, location or the site, I don't know. It's visible from scenic highways, et cetera.
All right.
One of the things that you're talking about here is if you, if you decide you want to play with fire, no fun, pun intended, is that, fine, there are occupation of the property, they can say, you know what, we're going to pull out tomorrow because it's, you know, it's illegal and our attorneys tell us we've got to pull out tomorrow. You've also given up the right to have a restoration plan. You've given up the right to have any of that examination done because the, because the only thing that's left is the emergency CDP. And that just says it has to be restored. Nothing about a plan, nothing about anything. So you, you, you do have to pay your money and take your choice.
What do you think, guys?
So by that, you're saying that what, what Mr. Silverstein said is not accurate, that if we said no, that we would somehow have more leverage to get the restoration done?
Leverage, but input.
I, I think it's completely inaccurate. I think that it's six of one and half a dozen of the others. At least by this, by doing what you, what we propose to do, you get an opportunity to see what the restoration plan is going to look like. You have some input onto it, whereas otherwise you don't. Now, you know, it may be great as a litigation strategy, but we're not here to prepare litigation strategies.
Read back what you got for a motion right now.
Okay. I believe the motion from Commissioner Jennings, let me reflect that this, let me know if this reflects your motion, was to approve staff's recommendation. And that included that the work's done by December 31st or the, or whenever they complete the, the project, whichever is earlier. And then you're adding a condition that says that SCE will produce a detailed plan of restoration produced by an expert chosen by the city to restore the condition of the, of the property to the way it existed prior to the issuance of the ECDP, which will comply with the LIP, including Section 4.8.2B, and be published on the city website for comment to be, for a period of 30 days, to be respond, then be responded to by staff and SCE, SCE and presented for public comment at the next available planning commission meeting. And I think that's.
Do we have to put something in there about denying the permit, the conditional use permit for the parking lot?
Oh, sorry. And then, and then restore, after that, restore the property to its condition prior to the ECDP to the satisfaction of the planning director. Sorry, Chair Yurin, what was your comment?
Do we have to say that there's a, the conditional use permit for using it as a parking lot? We have to deny that?
That's, that's staff's recommendations that that's denied.
Okay, so that's.
That would be denied and you'd be approving a TUP and CDP.
One thing I would add, it would be that, that, that the report is to be prepared, prepared by SCE, by an expert chosen by the city at, at SCE's expense.
At SCE's expense, okay. And then in the, reference to 4A2, I don't think we need the B. Just 4A2 is about wetlands in general, so just to call. Just compliance with the LIP? Yeah, well, 4A2, just because that, that's. 4.8.2. Yeah, just drop the B, I think. Okay.
So we have a motion, was there, was there a section?
So to be clear.
He said the whole wetland thing in there.
So to be clear, that this will be approving staff's recommendation with the restoration to be done to the condition existed prior to the ECDP to the satisfaction of the planning director, but then it adds this process that we discussed in terms of how the plan is done.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Kathleen? Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Yurin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, I'd like to have a, is that it for that?
Yeah.
We have 18 minutes and we had one person.
I'm going to bring back to Barzakini the.
The extension.
Extension.
Do you want to bring that back now?
Yeah, let's get that, we got, we got.
Do you want to dismiss one of them?
Thank you, guys.
Or the other items?
I don't.
Thank you, Robert.
That, we've got the, the, everybody said the document that.
So we need, we need a, a motion to, to.
Requesting an extension.
To change the, to call item, what was it?
I'll make a motion to call item 3B2 now.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay?
Aye?
Aye. All right, anybody want, want to take staff recommendation?
We, we didn't open disclosures or the public comment on this.
Excuse me?
We need to disclose just in the public comment on the item. Since we called it, we, we never actually had the public hearing, we just, we asked a question to staff and then they brought it back.
Oh, sorry.
So take disclosures and then.
Anybody want, any comments?
Yes, on 3B2?
3B2.
Yes, absolutely.
And you have disclosures, too.
And disclosures, any disclosures? 3B2? No, no.
Nothing I heard, didn't hear until last.
All right, John, go ahead.
Are we, do we have anybody speaking?
No.
Okay, well, I, I have a problem with this in that the request for extension is untimely and the Coastal Commission has determined that once you miss it, it may not be resurrected.
Yeah, we, that's what was clarified, John.
It was not clarified because the, the resolution and the staff report states June 2nd, and this letter is June 4th, okay? It is passed. Fourth.
This report, this, this request came in on 5/8.
Yes, Chair Yurin, the, the, the extension request was submitted on May 14th, 2019, along with.
Well, the one he gave.
And the rest of the materials were submitted subsequent, which is not unusual.
But the one we just got, when we asked for it, we just got from.
The other supporting docs, John.
The other documents, John.
Yeah, or May 8th.
Next page.
Yeah.
And receive May 14th, yeah.
Then why, why are all these others here? Now, and I also have a problem with, well, is May 8th the same as May 14th? This isn't a letter, time request, but there's, where's the reasons why? I see no reason why, and I'm just skimming this real quickly, why he needed a time extension. He has to be.
Commissioners, commissioners, can I clarify something on the last item? That was to allow SCE to use the full lot, not half.
Yes, full lot.
Okay.
The, the planning department policy number five requires you to have a reason. And May 24th, 14th does not have any reasons. It's just, it's just a fill-out form.
Isn't it normal policy for that to come later?
It's, it is not unusual for, it, it, yes, it's normal policy for someone, much like an appeal, they submit the appeal application and then the follow-up documentation comes in after that.
Is that actually codified somewhere that that's what works?
They're looking for a six, they're looking for a six-month extension.
I know. And, and the reason, there is no reason in the letter that followed on June 2nd. There's no reason. It said they sold it to another guy and he's been working on it.
Which is why Adrian asked him for better documentation, which came in a few days later.
That's this one.
Right.
This one has no reason.
Okay, John, I'm going to take staff recommendation. Yeah, I'm going to second.
Okay, I'm going to beg you to vote no because this, we get it because the Coastal Commission has made a specific determination that they did on the ones you guys, that you guys approved on, on Coastline or whatever that one is up in Big Rock.
It just says, extension shall be requested in writing by the applicant.
I know, and then our policy says you have to have a reason, okay?
And the reason was given on August 8th, the letter in the, in the packet. So not the letter there. The, that letter reasoning was insufficient, so the applicant addressed that.
This is June 4th.
I know, and then they gave an additional supporting documentation on the 8th.
Which reads the same as this one. Have you read it?
It's calling out problems.
Yeah, but guys, we have a motion, a second. Kathleen?
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Yurin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Nope.
Motion carries.
Last one is, let me go back to my beginning.
I think you have two items, Chair Yurin. If you're not going to hear both, should we continue one?
Well, I think we can get through the, let me just, we've got five.
B, C and D.
Okay, 5B is up next.
Do you want to make a motion to continue the other two items? Do you want to make a motion to continue the other two items?
5C is the HRL lab, and 5D is the, yeah, we're not gonna get to both of those.
Do you want to make a motion to continue?
So I would like to make a motion that we postpone those-
Continue the next available.
Continue to the next meeting.
Aye.
Yes. Yeah, I just-
We can't hear you.
We got 10 more minutes of a meeting.
Yeah, on 5D, this is actually a continuation from a previous, and, uh, we have the owner coming from out of town especially for this, you know, and he is actually gonna be leaving tomorrow, so that's why we requested, we tried to request before if he, we can, uh, you know, have that project reviewed today, you know? Uh, we, we were supposed to be before-
I, I understand, and, uh, we're trying to move these things as fast as we can, uh, we're just not, can't have a chance to get to it this evening.
Can, can at least the owner have a word with it, yeah, express his, uh, you know?
I'm, I'm, I mean, the, I don't think the, the-
No.
The expression of the owner, I think we're gonna make the decision based upon what we've got in the staff report, so-
Absolutely.
I mean, I appreciate what the owner's got an interest, and I can understand he wants to get it done, but I think we got the detail on the staff report, we're gonna have to go, go, go on.
Okay, thank you anyway.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's do 5B.
Wait, do we gotta, do, do we get a full motion and a vote?
Yeah.
We didn't get a vote.
Are we continuing to a date certain, or?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, no, this guy's leaving, and he's-
So that was 5C and 5D, so now we're calling 5B, right?
This guy's next.
Oh, okay, which one are we on?
5B. Okay, only gonna do 5B. All right, and that is coastal development permit number 17-116, demolition permit number 19-007, application for an upgrade and expansion of existing onsite water treatment system and associated exterior site improvements at 24910 Pacific Coast Highway, Renee, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Euring and Planning Commissioners, um, as just stated, this item is CDP 17-116 and demolition permit number 19-007.
Guys, appreciate, folks. Take, if you take it outside, that would be much appreciated. Go ahead, Renee.
So, um, this slide depicts the vicinity map and aerial photo of the project site. Um, this is a residentially zoned property, um, bounded by PCH to the north and Malibu Road to the south. It is a bluff-top property measuring at a little over one and a half acres, and is developed with a single-family residence that's roughly 7,500 square feet. In summary, the project includes an upgrade and expansion to the existing septic system, the demolition of a deck, the construction of a new 440-square-foot pergola, which is, has a trellised roof, so it's visually permeable to the sky. It also includes the construction of a, a new outdoor kitchen, um, and in place of the demolished deck will be a fire pit, a fountain, and a seating area located 15 feet from the top of bluff. Um, all of the components of this particular part of the project do not include, um, nor require a structural foundation. And I made that note because it's within a 50-foot setback from the top of bluff. Um, the application also includes new landscaping and hardscape, and, um, it also includes the after-the-fact approval of a sports court located in a front yard setback that does not include perimeter fencing. And associated with that unpermitted sports court, um, was grading that measured at about 115 cubic yards. And, um, also built without permits was a covered patio that measures at 468 square feet. Um, both the pergola and the, the covered deck are, um, eight, at 18 feet in height. Also included in the project is the replacement of a vehicle entry gate. The current gate, um, as I'll, I have a slide that shows the existing, um, uh, vehicle entry gate, which is a solid six-foot-high wall, and the replacement gate will be visually permeable, no taller than six feet in height. And here's a little bit of chronology for the property or the development. Um, a coastal permit was issued by the Coastal Commission in 1998. A few years later, the Coastal Commission amended that CDP, um, and in that amendment, the square footage of the residence slightly changed, and additional grading was approved to address remedial, um, um, grading that was needed for the site. The construction of that home was completed in 2002. A few years later, um, the city issued an emergency coastal permit to allow for remedial slope repair. And, um, as required by the LCP, the follow-up CDP application for that emergency CDP was submitted in 2009. In 2015, the property transferred ownership, and shortly thereafter, the current property owner started addressing a host of, um, code enforcement violations. So next year, um, in 2016, the city processed several entitlements to address the unpermitted development. APR 14-059 was approved for a bluff-top deck built without permits. Um, the follow-up CDP to the city-issued emergency CDP was finalized by the Planning Commission, and the, um, city also issued an entitlement for an interior remodel, but also with that interior remodel included the removal of several unpermitted shed structures, lowering some of the landscaping in the front yard setback that exceeded the, the maximum height of six feet for a solid hedge, and also required the demolition of the sports court. In 2017, the subject application was submitted to the city, and it was during review of the current CDP that staff, um, noted that the sports court was not demolished with the previously approved, um, APR, and the property owner has decided to maintain the sports court and has, um, rolled in the approval of it in the pending coastal development permit application. Okay, here's a site plan that depicts, um, the different components of the development. In gray, um, illustrates the footprint of the existing residence. Let's see, I guess I'll start along the western property line and kind of work my way around. On the south side of the structure, um, are the proposed pergola and cover patio areas. Um, the red solid line indicates the delineated top of bluff, and 15 feet from it are the existing, um, deck to be demolished as a part of this application, and in its place will be a, a water feature, a fire pit, and a seating area, again, none of which require or propose structural foundations. Um, along the western, um, northwestern part of the property is the replacement of the septic system, and highlighted in green illustrates the landscape, landscaping easement that runs along the western property line that actually sits on the neighboring property. The, um, existing sports court also encroaches into that landscape easement by five feet. Next are some site photos, and I'm gonna start, um, at the northern property line and work our way south, um, along the property. Um, here is an image of the existing vehicle entry gate that exceeds the maximum height of 42 inches, um, for a solid wall. Uh, this will be replaced with a visually permeable fence, no higher than six feet. This image depicts, um, the existing landscaping within the landscape easement. Again, there's a 14-foot-wide landscaping, landscaping easement along the western property line. This is an image of the unpermitted sports court that is seeking approval with this application. This is an image of the existing, um, covered patio, um, that is seeking an after-the-fact approval with the subject application. This is a south-facing, um, excuse me, a north-facing image at the rear of the structure, um, showing the location of the covered patio and a proposed pergola. This is an image of the existing deck that is proposed for demolition. Um, the bottom photo, um, shows the 15-foot setback from the top of bluff. And this is an image looking south at the paddy, uh, excuse me, at the deck, um, and in its place will be the fire pit, uh, water feature, and seating area. So last week, um, staff did hear, um, from the Coastal Commission, there were three pieces of correspondence that came in on these, on this application, the first of which was, um, an email from the Coastal Commission, who questioned the railroad ties that run along the south-facing slope of the property. Um, the image on the left, it's kind of hard to see, I apologize for the lack of resolution, but the image on the left is an aerial photo that shows railroad ties that wind down the bait, the, the slope face, uh, the bluff face, excuse me. And, um, the image on the right is a photo taken by staff during one of the initial site visits while reviewing this application. So, um, the Coastal Commission has the opinion that those railroad ties, um, are illegal and require a CDP. They referenced several things, one of which is the exemption section, um, of the, of the LIP, um, section 13.4, where the LCP identifies a list of types of projects that would be exempt from needing a coastal permit, um, but also in that section, there's a host of types of development that would be the exception to that exemption. Um, and they noted, uh, that the development on the bluff face makes those railroad ties the exception to qualify for the exemption. The Coastal Commission also cited the future improvement D restriction that was originally approved, um, for the property for the construction of the residence. Um, the, the future improvement D restriction required any additional development, um, to require a new CDP. And the Coastal Commission also cited, um, um, issues with public access. There's, uh, well, excuse me, shoreline and bluff-top development. Um, there's a section of the LCP, um, LIP section 6.5. D, um, that prohibits permanent structures along a bluff face unless it's to provide public access. Um, the Coastal Commission feels that the railroad ties are on private property and basically violate this section of the LIP. And in staff's response, um, those bluff, um, railroad ties that were installed on the property were done so with the original slope repair that was done on the property. Um, those bluff top, uh, excuse me, those railroad ties were needed to provide continued access to the slope, um, for a continued maintenance and brush clearance, and, um, and those railroad ties are also considered non-permanent development, uh, making them exempt from the coastal development permitting requirements. Staff also received a letter, and I believe that was forwarded to you from the property owner immediately west of the property, um, who's, um, expressed support for the application, and also, um, indicated, um, her agreement with allowing the existing sports court to continue to encroach into the 14-foot, um, set, um, landscaping easement. Staff also received, um, correspondence from Commissioner Hill, um, who had some questions, um, regarding, um, the site grading. Um, in your staff report, there is discussion about, um, the grading that was already approved with the construction of the residence. Um, this current application includes an additional 115 feet of unpermitted grading that was done during the construction of the sports court. And there was a question regarding, um, the original baseline grading of 880, um, cubic yards, which was actually lifted from the original final stamp plan for the residence, and it was also substantiated by grading permits that were issued during the construction of, um, the single-family residence. There was also a question regarding, uh, what is the protocol for requiring sports court fencing, um, when one is constructed without the benefit of permits? And in response to that concern, um, I believe the sports court is used as a basketball court, is my understanding. Um, the sports court sits about 61 linear feet from the front property line and sits at an elevation that's about 11 feet below, um, the grade of PCH. Um, and because of that, staff deemed, um, sports court fencing was not required, um, for the continued maintenance of the sports court. And lastly, there was a question regarding, um, the protocol and what, for which, um, review was required by the Water Works District, and I believe the planning staff at the counter just aired on a side of caution. Um, I believe they saw the water feature proposed in the application, and they saw the outdoor kitchen as a component of the application and thought, let's just refer it to the county, just to make sure we cover all bases. But it sounds like it was not required, um, with the scope of work proposed in this application. And I forgot to mention, um, that we did get some, um, some comments from the applicant team regarding, um, the staff report, and there were a couple of errors, um, one of which is found on page four, um, in the second paragraph, where staff indicated that the property was surrounded by residential, residential development, and then following that, um, paragraph is a table that provides surrounding land uses, and the table actually is accurate, um, in that it is surrounded by residential development except for the commercial development to the north, on the north side of PCH. There was also an error regarding the sighting of the septic system. I believe the staff report on page nine indicated the septic system was on the northeastern part of the property, when in fact, it is actually on the northwestern, um, part of the property. Um, the applicant also wanted to clarify, um, the nature of the unpermitted, um, construction that was done by the previous property owner, and I've kind of, kind of, um, guided us through that, that it was actually done by the previous property owner, and the current property owner is seeking to, um, abate those code enforcement violations. And there was also a request regarding the grading, um, um, that was served as the baseline for the application, but again, the grading that was indicated in your staff report was lifted from the plans we have on file for the construction of the residence, and also, substantiated with the grading, um, permits that were issued for the residence. Um, so in fact, the 880 cubic yards of grading indicated in your staff report is accurate. And with that, staff is able to make all required findings applicable to this project, including the request for, um, the demolition permit, and that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions, and the applicant team is also here to address any questions you have.
John, go ahead, go ahead, John.
In one of your pictures, it looks like the side yard, you said f- fologies, but, but it looks like a side yard hedge.
Yes.
Looks to be much higher than six feet, is that correct?
I believe in the staff report, or the Coastal Commission approval, the, the landscaping within the landscape easement was not allowed to exceed 18 feet in height.
We need to do disclosures.
Oh, we need to do that? Okay. I, I, go ahead.
Disclosures.
Yeah. I, I visited the site with Commissioner Euring, and, um, I, I sent the emails that I don't think that were characterized exactly what I was getting at. I don't know if we get into that now, or, or-
No, just disclosures.
Okay, all right.
John?
I believe I was on the original, uh, commission that approved the house.
No disclosures.
I visited the site with Commissioner, uh, Hill, and we spoke to the applicant, and they took us for a walk around the property, so didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report.
Okay, back to my question.
Commissioner Mazza, was there anything from your prior hearing that's applicable tonight that-
No, I remember the house next door much better.
Okay.
And that's why I have a question on that 14-foot side yard fence, that, that applicant was not easy to deal with, uh, I, do we really have in writing in the CDP that they could have a 14-yard side yard fence, 14-foot side yard fence?
The, the landscape easement is actually 14 feet wide, and I believe the Coastal Commission's condition requires the landscaping to be maintained at a height of 18 feet. I'll double-check that permit.
I'd like to double-check that, because that's pretty hard to believe, um, with the view problems in that area. Now. Are you saying that the Coastal Commission, well, I'll let you check that while you're doing it.
Yeah, it's actually, um, I believe it's the second attachment is the original coastal permit.
Okay.
And on page four of five of the original permit, um, I believe it's-
Second attachment, let me find the attachment, please. Is that before or after the plans?
It's right after the, it's before the plans, right after the resolution.
Dated, uh-
Planning should be selected and maintained is not to exceed 18 feet in height, that's what it says.
On the side yard. That's, that's for the whole property, right? What, I gotta find out where that is. See, there was a question of you, and this is from memory from a long time ago, what page are you on?
I'm on page here.
You can have mine.
Here.
Three of five?
Four.
Which, which number is it?
The last item on the page.
It's on page four, at the top.
Oh, this is the, when it was- This is for the whole property. This is from, for, to protect the view from the highway to the ocean, because it drops down, and so they maintain it at 18 feet. I don't see where it, it allows a standard house is, is six feet side yard, and I assume that's in, in the, um, this is intent to notice permit, it's, it doesn't have all the stuff, but the normal condition, I'm positive, was followed on, on side yard, on side yard and front yard, because they followed the front yard at 42 inches. And this, this is specifically for, you stand in the middle of the highway and see if you can see the ocean at five feet elevation, and you have to keep your foliage below that line, it's an artificial line drawn in the end, it's from the center of the highway. This covers the whole property, not the side yard. Side yard is the same as a fence, you can't have an 18-foot fence. Same thing as this, you, you can't have an 18-foot side yard. In the side yard setback, it has to be six feet. So I, I would, I'm gonna ask that be made six feet.
What, what, is there any application relating to the foliage or the side yard setback, other than the fact that the spork- than the fact that the sport court is allowed to intrude?
What do you mean application? It's blocks few.
It's just, you're just sort of random vigilante?
No, this is every single house that I've ever approved in Malibu, except for, that I've ever seen approved, other than Jack Lemons.
There's no, yeah, exactly. There's no application that relates to the side yard.
There, if we had their CDP, this is not the CDP, it would say, front yard 42 inches, side yard six feet.
I think you're missing my point, John. The point is that there's no application for anything they're asking to do that has anything to do with the foliage on the side yard.
There it is, right there. It's in violation.
So, okay, so this is a, this is a...
Code enforcement. Well, they're doing the same thing on the front yard fence. It's in violation. They're fixing it. The front gate, also the front hedge is in violation.
No, the front hedge has been cut down. Right? The front hedge has been...
Yes.
It's gone?
It's been reduced. They trimmed the...
They trimmed it to the top of the pillars. I drive by it every day.
Okay.
Well, the top of the pillars.
Can we open the public hearing? This is question time.
Okay, you can open the public hearing, and then I'll ask the question again.
Okay, we've got three speakers. Who would like to go first? This is the applicant team, right? So you've got 15 minutes between all of you. Go ahead.
Justin Block on behalf of the property owners Patty and Grant Sims, not anticipating using close to the 15 minutes. We have the project geologist, expediter architect here to answer any questions you may have. I mean, Renika kind of lined it up, laid everything out. One thing I want to correct is, the city actually issued a permit for those steps in 2009, I believe. So the city issued a permit for those steps, which is why they're there. With regards to what you said, the current property owners purchased the property November 2015. Since that day, they've been working with the city to clear up, and there was only one violation on the property, and they immediately cleared that up. And the rest of the time, they've been, you know, finding unpermitted development, and they've been, you know, taking the lead in getting rid of it. So come before you today to upgrade the septic system, expand it, make it compliant with the city code, as it will treat the affluent. Trying to permit a sports court, it's an amenity that every single property owner has along this street, this side of PCH. 2005, actually, the Coastal Commission approved a landscaping plan for the site, found it being substantial conformance with CDP amendment number one, I think from 2000. Same area as the sports court is a flat play area, same exact dimension, same everything. So once we learned that the city didn't permit it for grading purposes, we threw it into this application right now. These property owners have done everything that is asked of them to bring this property in compliance. With that being said, you know, I'll defer, I mean, no one here is speaking in opposition, so there's no need for rebuttal, but we're here to answer any questions you may have, and we'll try to answer them to the best of our abilities.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yeah.
If you're not in violation of anything, why did we get a report that you're going to fix your violations?
Come again?
Renika said that you had violations, and they were going to be fixed.
Right.
During the CUP process.
I believe there's unpermitted development. There's not violations recorded against the property.
Okay.
Those are two different things.
Unpermitted development and violation are two different things?
Well, there's not a violation, notice of violation.
Well, John, that's what we're trying to fix here.
Okay, well, I just wondered what that statement meant.
But I would like to clarify that these property owners, I understand, unpermitted development and violations might run with the land, but they did not...
Right.
...construct any of the items that were referenced in staff report.
Okay, second, and Renika, would you comment on this after we get an answer? If the stairs were permitted, which I've never seen new stairs on a bluff be permitted, but if they were, were they temporary for the construction and maintenance of, well, somebody mentioned temporary stairs. Is that correct?
Yes, railroad ties are temporary developed. They're not permanently fixed to the ground.
Okay.
They can be lifted and removed.
From my understanding, they were approved via an over-the-counter permit in 2009 for brush clearance and maintenance of a slope repair.
So, Bonnie, can staff approve stairs on a bluff over the counter?
We wouldn't call these stairs. These are, they're railroad ties that are placed on the ground in order to facilitate maintenance, so that, yes.
So if I, would they go all the way down to the road below, correct?
Look like it from the picture.
So could I permit a stair on the bluff at Point Doom if they were railroad ties?
If you needed railroad ties for some sort of a maintenance thing, then that's something that we would probably approve.
Even in NESHA?
That's...
Not in NESHA.
They're specifically prohibited by the LCP.
They're... I'm just explaining how that happened in 2009.
All I can say is there's a stamp plan stamped by the city planning department stamping approved a set of stairs. So, I mean, that's not up for debate in this hearing right now.
Okay, well, let's hear first. Okay, let other people.
Does anybody, anybody else in your team want to say anything?
I think they're here just to address any questions you may have. They're probably more familiar with the ins and outs of the project and site-specific questions.
Then let me close the public hearing and just go to questions. Go ahead, John.
Just on the railroad ties, I didn't get that letter. Was that distributed to us all?
I didn't get the letter.
I would like to see that. I don't need it tonight necessarily, but I would like, if you would forward it, I'd be interested just to read it and learn something.
Which letter are you talking about? The Coastal Commission's or...
Regarding the railroad ties, yeah.
I think that was distributed as correspondence.
I don't know.
I did not get that, so.
Do we have a copy? Can we circulate it here to the commissioners?
It may have, it may have been an email inquiry to staff.
Send it again.
Okay.
Okay, so my biggest, probably my biggest question, concern?
It was an email inquiry to staff, and that's what, it wasn't submitted as a formal letter. That's why we didn't distribute it. We just responded to the question.
Okay. I'd just like to see it. My biggest interest and concern, and maybe this is for staff first, but probably Mr. Kowalewski might want to address this too, is that we have this history of the remedial grading to mitigate the geotechnical hazard of a failed slope. And now, the will-serv letter is, the reason we have the will-serv letters for the existing house that already was getting water, is that they're adding an additional 160,000 gallons of water per year on the site for this water feature thing. So what I didn't see anywhere addressed is, is there any potential interaction between the historic slope failure, which has been remediated, but now we're adding all that extra water? Is that any concern? And can we sign off on that in good faith, or how does this work?
I'll defer to Mr. Kowalewski, who can answer that question.
As you know, because of my long period of time out here, I was, there was a portion of Malibu Road, excuse me, all of Malibu Road was studied in four portions for geologic stability. I was the county, I was the geologist who was hired by the county to do the section of the road in front of this property. And we found that the slope was unstable mathematically at that point in time, subsequent to that point in time, and has failed twice on this property. It wasn't just this property, it involved properties to the east and the west, some degree also. Now, the first repair was done for the lower half of the slope, and it had a large drainage bench done on top of that. And then I got involved when the second repair, which was the other half of the slope, fell down, and so we reconstructed that. At the time we reconstructed, by the way, there were the remnants of stairs that went down to the drainage bench for the maintenance of that drainage bench, because there was no other way to get to it, either from the street up or from the house down. And so they reconstructed those railroad ties so they could maintain that. But you're asking about the water. We put in a number of de-watering devices on this property. I think there are four de-watering wells on this property to suck the water out, and it goes in, that water from that goes into a large storage tank on the property, which hasn't been addressed because it was something that was permitted some time ago. And that water was supposed to fill the tank and run off slowly down away, but eventually the people started using that water for irrigation purposes on the property rather than just let it be lost, all right? And so they are actively pumping water out of four different wells on this property to keep the total water, groundwater table down, because the groundwater table is what caused the slope failures, and it does all the way along Malibu Road. I call it Malibu Road because we studied Malibu Road, and it specifically goes highway also, obviously. So the irrigation, the numbers that you gave me on irrigation, I don't know where those came from, or, excuse me, for the water use, that water feature is very small. There's a swimming pool on the property already, and then there's a small water feature they're putting in, but the water feature is not going to take 140,000 gallons of water.
Well, let me clarify. The proposed landscaping, so the new change is not just the water feature, is estimated to be approximately 157,859.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that number. I don't know anything about that number. But I know that the water, we put these wells in so that we can keep the water level down below 40 feet below the ground surface, so that it won't become an issue with respect to the slopes. When we redid the slopes, by the way, we put in subdrains in there, so the new water that gets within 10 feet of the face of the slope, back to where we cut it out and put the compacted fill back, won't get into the compacted fill and cause it to fail later on. So I have to answer your question sort of in a general sense. The water that's being applied, provided the well still function, should not be an issue.
Okay. I'm speaking as a Big Rock resident, and I know you're well familiar with that.
Very, yeah.
The best intentions often don't quite cut it, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You're right.
All right. Other questions? Yeah, on the sports court, my question was, I wasn't clear about it. It's, to my mind, it's basketball, it's also a sort of racquetball scale court, it's not quite a tennis court. That doesn't work without fencing. You can't play a ball sport on that thing without having some kind of fence to contain the ball, or the balls. And so they're going to want to put a fence there if they're going to use the court. So I just wondered, what is that, how does that work in terms of permitting? Can it, does it have to be...
A fence can be approved as just an accessory, you know, over the counter later if they decided to put a fence in.
So that's not a concern to us now? That doesn't, it's not any sort of cumulative thing, or...
A fence around a sports court?
I don't know. I mean, it may need to be a certain height.
It's restricted in terms of a maximum height, but it's not, we don't normally require someone to put a fence in for a sports court.
Can you put a fence in a side yard setback?
Yeah, that's, that's part of it, too.
If it's, it's limited to the normal heights.
Well, that leads to the other question. Is it sufficient that they got, we have the letter in the file now from the neighbor saying they don't object to the, is that adequate solution there, or is there some further?
I'm not sure which, solution to what?
There was originally a plan they were going to make him take or tear off five feet. There originally was a request to...
There originally was a request to remove five feet of the court, because it was in the easement, and then the lady next door wrote a letter and said she doesn't care, so leave it there. So...
Is that sufficient?
It's a view corridor, isn't it?
Does it go over the property line?
It does. And I asked about that very issue, because we have language for the easement that is very specific to landscaping. But was told that because we do have a letter in writing from that property owner, that that would be sufficient to allow the sports court to continue to encroach into the easement, that normally the city does not involve itself in private matters regarding easements between property owners.
Can I ask a question? Just, the, is the landscaping, trying to figure out where the easement is, is the easement on the neighbor's property so that, so that these people get to use 14 feet wide of the neighbor's property?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Trevor, on that, that easement's a permanent record, and the letter is just a letter from somebody who lived there at one time.
Yeah, I'm a little con...
So you can't, you have to alter the easement.
Yeah.
We can't do that.
I don't have much to add, but just to try to add some clarity. Commissioner Jennings, you're correct. 14 feet of the neighbor's property is an exclusive easement for the benefit of the subject property. It's landscaping and drainage, there's also tons of drainage structures that go under the property and then exit out, I think, on the neighbor's property. And when the court was built, five feet of it was constructed within that 14-foot easement area. And I guess what Renika is saying is the neighbor submitted a letter supporting the project, and also stating that she has no objection to the neighbor utilizing a portion of that easement on her property as a portion of five feet of this sports court.
So the question is whether that needs to be formalized in the deed in some way, so that, so it pertains to future owners of the neighborhood property, they...
Is that our problem?
Right, and that's civil...
It's our problem permitting something on somebody else's property. We can't do that.
I mean, we either have to say, that's okay, or we have to say, no, you have to cut off the five feet of it.
Right, yeah.
We have to choose, and I want to be able to say it's okay, but that needs to be recorded against future owners of that property, too. It can't just be the single letter, I think.
No, no, I see what you're saying. It's essentially the intent of the two parties, the easement holder, saying that this five feet, we acquiesce to you utilizing it within the landscape easement. I, that's not going to hold up anything we do tonight, whether you guys say chop it off or don't chop it off, we'd prefer to keep it. But just understand, you know, that's not a deal breaker here. We just want to get this going, get it approved, and get you all home, so.
Bonnie?
Let me, let me...
Can you build a tennis court in a side yard setback?
Yes.
Okay. So if we chop it off five feet, or what is it, 14 feet or five feet, then they're legal. If not, we're permitting somebody else's...
You'd only be permitting the development that's on the property here before you today, whatever is...
Right.
Because we didn't notice any development on the other property, so we're just dealing with what's...
We actually noticed both APNs because of this, because this court overlapped.
Just to clarify, the second APN is the southern portion of the property that abuts Malibu Road. So between PC...
Oh, it's not the...
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's not the portion that has the sports court. So today, you're only approving the portion of the sports court that's on their own property. Whatever exists on the other property would then need to be separately approved, or just exist and be subject to future enforcement action, potentially. But all you're permitting today would only be the portion that's on the property.
Yeah, but we're...
We don't have to approve taking these five feet off.
We have to.
You're...
Do we have to record taking those five feet off?
It's a new, because it was built, it was built without a permit, so we have to permit what's legal.
You're asking, you can either, you could, you could permit what's on their property and not take action against the existing on the other property, or you could require it to be removed.
That's it. So we permit like three-quarters of a tennis court, and then let them solve the rest of it civilly.
They could come back, and they could, they could, they could ask for whatever permit they're going to need for the, would it be over the counter?
Could we sanction an illegal act?
Can you what?
Can we sanction an act, something that was done illegally?
You know, I don't know what you mean by sanction.
Well, we've noticed in our staff report here that there's a construction done on somebody else's property. It's noticed, we know about it.
Yeah, you're going to direct...
And we're giving a permit for that.
You're not giving a permit?
Ex post facto permit.
You're permitting after the fact for the portion that's on their property is what you'd be doing here tonight.
So if the, if the neighbor, if there was a new neighbor, all of a sudden they could say, oh, you had a permit for the court, but not the last five feet, so I'm making you take it off now. And they'd have to do that.
It could be a dispute, yeah. Or you could, or you could require it to be removed at this point.
I'd like to say one thing to clarify all of this, sort of, I realize that you're actually dealing with the court, because it's part of the application. But within that easement, we have, when they reconstructed the slope, the drainage that comes off of this property down to that swale I was talking about, and even a drain at the top of slope that's required, because you have to have top of slope drains, runs through the neighbor's property and on down, so the drainage is joint across the property line, and the large storage tank for water, so that wouldn't flood off the property quickly, that is also within that easement. So there's quite a few other developments within the easement which are not a part of this application. But it is not, the easement has been used for more than just landscaping.
Did they, did they get permits for all that stuff?
They did, yes.
Okay. Now, while you're there, let me ask you, what maintenance needs to be done on the hill?
The hill needs to be landscaped. There are, as I talked before, there are subdrains in the back of our fill, that the pipes come to daylight out there, and they, luckily, there's not a lot of water coming out of this, in fact, there's no water coming out now, but they're put in so that we could pick up water if necessary. So, they would then run down the slope and they need to be maintained. And then, we have the drainage swale that's about 30 feet below, maybe, yeah, 30 feet below the building pad level, which is, it's probably 15 feet wide or more. And so, that needs to be maintained. Debris needs to be taken out of that. And it actually services partially the property to the east and the property to the west because of the nature of how large that landslide was. And then, it continues on down through drainage swales to Malibu Road where it's caught in a, caught in a catch basin and carried out to the beach. So, the, the catch basin, the swale going down the slope and the drainage swale on the big terrace, those are all things that need to be maintained, which means people have to get down there to clean them. And unfortunately, the previous owner didn't do anything and we've got pretty full of junk.
Okay.
Okay. I have one last comment question. The, we're calling here for a qualified professional archaeologist or qualified CHUMASH cultural resource monitor. I would condition it that it be, we require the professional and, and allow and encourage the CHUMASH to attend also, but that we want a professional archaeologist. It's, that, that's sort of the first, first cut requirement.
Okay. I, again, am a little confused on the side yard. If there's this easement, are those 18-foot trees going down the side yard, are they on this property?
They're on the neighboring property within the landscape easement.
Within the what?
The landscape easement on the neighboring property.
So, the neighbor is the one that's violating, violating the side, the side yard fence?
It is technically on the neighboring property, yes. Within an easement for the benefit of the, the subject property owners.
So, Trevor, here's the question. That's a specific view corridor that's very, been fought over and fought over and fought over and fought over. Now, we have an 18-foot side yard, a, a fence, technical fence, foliage fence, when it's supposed to be six feet. Did anybody do a, a view study to see if it blocked blue water views? And how do we, and can we require it to be fixed, like we have required the, the gate to be fixed?
Yeah, I mean, sixty, condition 64 says the landscaping must consist of low-profile plant species which will not block or obscure views of the ocean as seen from PCH. It says not to exceed 18 feet in height, but it can't obscure the views of the ocean.
That's the whole lot. I'm talking about the side yard. Different, different.
Well, the side yard is part of the whole lot.
No, it isn't.
Why?
It's part of the whole lot, but the requirement for views in that neighborhood and in all neighborhoods that have a view from the highway, the scenic highway, to the ocean, have the fence requirements. All houses in Malibu have the fence requirement, the side yard height limitation. The 18 feet is for the rest of the property.
Well, it says it can't block or obscure views of the ocean as seen from PCH, so.
That's the, that's that provision. There, somewhere, we don't have a full CDP. Somewhere in here, it'll have a standard, standard which every CDP ever issued has, the, the side yard and front yard fence requirements. And all I have is this notice of something or other, unless I'm missing something.
The CDP was issued before the LCP. It was issued in 98.
If you keep going farther forward, page one says it's a coastal development permit. It shows it's issued by the Coastal Commission in 1998 before the IP was in place.
So, you, you would know. Does that mean there was no side yard height requirements at that point?
Of course. There were. Then why did we, they have a hearing for Jack Lemmon to have one? That was way before.
Did they change the ordinance?
No, it was way before 2002.
It was, were you?
Okay, so we didn't have the LCP.
You need your microphone, Commissioner Jennings.
They still had the requirement. What?
I was just telling him to put his microphone.
As, as much fun as this is, I'm going to make a motion.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to mention one other thing before I make a motion.
I, I get to make a motion, John.
Okay.
In spite of the fact, I'm going to move the staff recommendation with the following change. And that is that the, after the fact approval of the sports court would be only as to that portion of the sports court which lies within the boundaries of the subject property.
Okay, and I'd like to make a supplemental motion.
Was there a second for his motion first?
I'll give you a second.
Second in the friendly addition of.
I'll do a second.
Archaeologists required, CHUMASH invited.
You could make that, that, you can offer that as an amendment, but you need a, a second. You, you, that's the way you do it.
Well, you could ask for a friendly amendment if you're not willing to accept it.
This whole friendly amendment nonsense, you make an amendment, you offer it, you get a second, you vote on that, then you go back and you vote on the main motion.
Trevor, as I remember, the thing you passed out of the new rules, said, said you could make a supplemental motion before that motion is voted on. Is that correct?
Well, you can ask, there's many ways we can skin this cat. So, if, if we want, you have a, we have Commissioner Hill made a motion for, to change the condition. Commissioner Marks seconded, so then we would vote on the amendment proposed, which would be to require a certified archaeologist. Which condition is it, Commissioner Hill? To alter number 14, to require, instead of saying a Native American representative, it would say a certified archaeologist. It changed the condition 14, yeah, condition 14.
The condition said or, and I'm just saying, let's require the first one and allow the second.
Your, your mic's not on.
Sorry. The condition just said or, one or the other, and I said, well, let's require the professional and allow the, the CHUMASH.
And I'm, and I'm, what I'm trying to do is get to the specific condition in the resolution that you're talking about.
Yeah, where, is it number 14? What, what is the exact change you want, Commissioner Hill?
It appears to say and.
It does say and. I intentionally changed it to and.
It says both. It says and.
So, it already says and, so do you withdraw your request for amendment?
The one I read said or.
Looking at condition 14 and page six, was there a different condition you're looking at?
I folded up my notes already. I'm sorry. I don't remember.
Uh, this is 14 cultural resource.
Yeah.
Says approve of name of qualified professional archaeologists and qualified CHUMASH resource.
And, okay, then that's, if that's what it says, that's what everyone was asking for.
Okay, get that out. So, what, John, you got anything else?
Okay, now, I just want to ask.
At nine.
In, in our, in our resolution that we're going to vote on, number 65 and number 66 are going to be followed. And that says 42 inches in the front and six feet on the side. Is that correct? Because it's in here. I don't need to make a amendment if it's, if that's correct.
Yeah. Which, which numbers are they? Number? Number 65.
65 and 66.
Says all is to comply, gate and fencing along the property line should comply with the regulations in LIP 3.5. And the height of the fences and walls should comply with 3.5.3.
Commissioner Maza, condition number 64, that is specific to landscaping, that'd be low profile, that was lifted from, directly from the Coastal Commission's staff report?
I'm not arguing that. That's in a different section. That's biology. That's number 64. That's landscaping on the property. The next section is fencing and walls. 65 says 42-inch fence, if you read the code. Those, those are six-foot fences that are out there now, hedges. And the, the side yard fence, number 65, is six feet, okay? Those are in here, so they should be followed, correct?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. I don't need to make an amendment.
Okay, so we got a motion and.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry. I need to correct mine, because what, what you have here, what I was reading from was the staff report when it said or, archaeologist or. And now, when I see the condition here, 14, it is a Native American representative shall be present. But what I'm saying is, we want the professional archaeologist present and we certainly want to allow the Native American representative, but it's the archaeologist who has the expertise to, to know what they're looking at there.
And I think his, I, just to make a comment, I think his or is appropriate, because I believe the city.
What, what it's saying here is that, is set up, you would have the CHUMASH representative observe it and if something is found by the representative, then they need to bring in the qualified archaeologist.
Yeah, he wants it the other way around.
And I, and I want to, I mean, it's the qualified archaeologist who knows what they're looking at. The CHUMASH observer is there for, you know, more cultural, spiritual, however you want to phrase it, but they're not an expert necessarily, right?
They may beg to differ.
Well, well, I mean, they're expert in certain things, but not necessarily in some technical archaeological thing, which is the point of having the person there.
And, and I.
How much grading we do?
It was in the thing, so I said, and what I read was or, so I said, make it this person.
Okay, so, you've raised this issue before in other projects and, and, and it is, it has not ever been this practice of the city to require a professional archaeologist to be on site every time grading is undertaken. It is only in the event of the discovery of something indicating the presence of human remains or, or cultural artifacts, then you have to call for. Call for the, the professional architect. You'll stop the work and you call for the professional archaeologist to come out. So, if, if your suggestion is that that's not, that, that your proposed amendment is that that practice be turned around and that, and that a, and a qualified archaeologist be, well, then, then I don't understand your, your proposed amendment.
No, no, well, turned around in this case, as, as I read it, it was essentially being required already. To clarify my concerns and my past motions on this, we've looked at things that were in particularly sensitive areas around Point Doom, for example. In this case, knowing what, I know the prehistoric situation, it's a little more borderline. Maybe this isn't as critical of, of an area as, as Point Doom might have been, because we're sort of halfway between that settlement and the, the Malibu Canyon area settlement stuff. So, this is, but I thought it was being called for in here anyway, so I said, let's make it the professional. If, if that's a hangup for people, if that's, then, then I'm, I don't want to insist on it and say that we need to change the city's practice as a general matter. But I just thought it was in there already, so I just wanted to try to clarify that.
Well, yes, in this case, there had been previous studies done on this property that yielded kind of an ongoing recommendation for onsite monitoring. And so, that's what we were trying to capture.
That's right.
And the, the wording in the reports wasn't terribly clear. So, if you would like to have it clarified to reflect what Commissioner Hill is saying, to have a professional archaeologist on site and an optional CHUMASH cultural resource monitor or however you want to word it.
I, I don't want to be a stick in the mud on this particular site, because I don't think it's as critical as some of the other things.
Well, let me, let me just do a quick comment. There is a problem now in the fact that there are three tribes that claim to be the CHUMASH for this area. And I don't know which one the city has decided to pick, but you're going to have a hard time picking one.
We, we actually, the applicant would propose one and we would typically agree to it.
Yeah, unless the other Indian say, he's not an Indian.
Let's worry about that when we get there.
Miss a Native American.
Where are you guys? Let's wrap, let's wrap this up. We change it up.
So, you're going to a straw vote if you want to change this to the archaeologist or not?
Well, he was putting an or, it doesn't matter, right?
No, because it's, it's, who's going to be observing on site? Whether, right now, it's set up to have the Native American representative on site. And then, if something's found, they go to the archaeologist. The other option would be to have the archaeologist on site, period. I don't know.
I don't know why you need the Native American, right?
Yeah, I'd, I'd go with the archaeologist.
Or the archaeologist.
Give something to do.
Why my practice is active. I was going to say, yeah.
It might be more expensive to have an archaeologist.
I'll vote for the archaeologist if you want to get this over with.
Okay.
Okay, so that's to change condition 14 to swap out Native American representative with qualified professional archaeologist?
And invite the Native American too, if they want to come.
Well.
Well, let them do that. That's what the word or is for, okay?
So, you, you mean, are you going to require two people to be on site?
No, no, no.
No?
No.
Okay, so then, we're just requiring that and then we'd strike the part about reporting to the archaeologist since they're already on site.
Right.
Is that, is that, that's your, your motion to amend, Commissioner Hill? Is there a second for it?
Somebody has to, if somebody made the motion, has to second it, right? I'll second it.
Commissioner Maza, I hate to belabor this issue, but I just want to make sure staff is clear about you, what you're expecting regarding the landscaping. The Coastal Commission already approved the existing landscaping within the easement. So, your concern is regarding anything new with this application?
No, no, no. The original CDP, which I just read, 64 and 65 are included. You included them in the resolution. That is what is required.
Okay.
Okay, so, the motion is, accept staff report. What else?
He has to accept the archaeologist.
Report with the exception of the sports court that extends over the neighbor property. You have a proposed amendment which has.
Is there a second for Commissioner Hill's amendment?
You second.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second.
Let's vote on the amendment.
Right. We got it.
This is the amendment to change the Native American monitor to qualified archaeologist and strike the reporting to the qualified.
Everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the, the motion has been amended. Now, you have Commissioner Jennings' motion.
Original motion.
Which has been amended with Commissioner Hill's amendment about the cultural resources and otherwise it's staff's recommendation, with the exception that it does not approve the portion of the sports court that is not on the property.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Imposed? Done? Done.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
Let's go home.
Aye.